Board of Commissioners to order. I would like to welcome the media and visitors. I would also like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones and other devices so we may conduct the people's business without interruption. Commissioner Toby Connor will give the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Father, thank you for today that you've given us. Thank you for a place to come and hold the meetings. Lord, thank you for the men and women that sacrificed their lives overseas and on our own shores, Lord, to give us this right and this opportunity. Dear Father, Lord, thank you for all the ones that's here that keeps us safe, all our public safety, EMS and fire, Sheriff's Office. Lord, and I ask that lift up, being as we, kids are back in school, I lift up all our teachers, all our educators to you, Lord. Lord, they may do the best job they can and take care of our most valuable possessions. Dear Father, Lord, as we go into this meeting, lead us and guide us. Have everything we do be emblem of you. God's any prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pray to the leaders, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Minty White, will you call the role of the Commissioners, please?
I, Venus Minty White, present as Clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Bullock County, hereby call the role for those on the governing body. All those present shall answer by saying aye. Chairman David Bennett.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Toby Connor.
Aye.
Commissioner Ray Mosley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anthony Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Nick Newkirk.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmy Rushing.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ray Davis. I determine that we have all members of the Board of Commissioners present. Therefore, we have a quorum to conduct business for the good of the citizens of Bullock County. And now, you're the floor back to you, Chairman.
Thank you. I'm gonna go completely off the reservation here for just a second. Before we go into our zoning agenda here, we have one issue that is listed as item number one on new business that we need to move ahead so we can go ahead and take care of it before we get started. And if I could, I need to get a motion to move this to the front of the line here.
So, Chairman.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Akins, I believe you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution that will authorize execution of the intergovernment agreement and other related documents relating to the Public Facility Authority's revenue bonds. The bond sale was held this morning, and the closing is scheduled for August 21st. And the Public Facilities Authority just adopted a supplemental resolution that they needed to adopt immediately prior to this meeting. And I think one reason we wanted to move it up, Christopher Holt with Davenport and Company is here tonight, and he's driving back to Atlanta, so we didn't want to have him to have to sit here till later in the evening and then drive back. But he will make a brief presentation about this.
Thank you, Mr. Akins. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Christopher Holt. I'm with Davenport and Company. We're financial advisors to the county. I'm also here with my colleague Ricardo Cornejo, who's in the back. And then, another one of our colleagues who's not here this evening, Doug Gettart, who came and presented to you all earlier this year to discuss the plan of finance and the structuring of this bond issuance that we're here today, that we had this bond sale earlier this morning. Also, as part of this transaction, I wanted to mention Murray Barnes and Finisterre, Tommy Ratchford and Roger Murray, who have been helpful on the legal side getting to where we are this evening. So, I know Mr. Akins just pointed out while we're here to approve the county resolution. Wanted to give just a brief presentation on the bond sale. We've got some great results following this bond sale, so I just kinda wanted to walk through those sale results in a little bit more detail. By way of background, as you may recall, earlier this year in May, we, my colleague Doug Gettart, came and presented the plan of finance, which outlined the repayment structure on how we are going to size these bonds. Following that, there was an authorization to move forward with the, one of the scenarios that we presented. In June, we, one of the Board of Commissioner meetings was held to present the bond resolution that outlined the financial parameters that we needed to stay within. And part of this bond sale, there was a not-to-exceed maximum annual debt service that we had to come in under in order for us to move forward with approving this bond issuance. Also, as part of that, in July, once we received that approval, that gave Mr. Akins, the county attorney, the ability to get the bonds validated, which was successful in July. Also, as part of getting that authorization, we started the credit rating process. To issue public bonds, we need to go through the credit rating agencies. So, in July, we met with Moody's and S&amp;P, and I have a section here that I'll walk through as well, which leads us to this bond sale that occurred this morning. So, going to slide one in this presentation, we wanted to show the credit rating results that the county received as part of this bond issuance. We're pleased to report that the county came back at a AA3, AA- from Moody's and S&amp;P respectfully, respectively. That is the second tier or the second highest category of rating for any municipality to come in at. So, this was a great result for the county, and I would like to, you know, congratulate the county staff for really putting in a lot of effort to put together the information to present that to the rating agencies that led us to this rating result, and then also in turn helped get these great sale results and interest rates that I'll go through here momentarily. Moving on to slide two, as part of the plan of finance that was presented earlier this year, we made the recommendation to sell these bonds competitively, meaning that any and all underwriters have the ability to bid on this bond issue, bond sale. Earlier this morning at 10:45, the county received four bids with Wells Fargo coming in at the lowest TIC or true interest cost. And the, and true interest cost is taking the coupon, the yields, and their fee, the underwriter's discount, and that calculation is what results in this true interest cost, interest rate. I want to just make just an observation here. I know Wells Fargo was the recommended bid, but you'll notice that Mezaro was the cover at a 3.69%, or roughly seven basis points higher. And then, Robert Baird was the last place bid at a 385, which was 23 basis points higher. We ran a calculation this afternoon, and the difference between Wells Fargo Bank's bid and Mezaro's, the second place bid, in terms of total debt service on the repayment on the bonds, was roughly $300,000. And then, from Wells Fargo to Robert W. Baird was nearly a million. So, we just wanted to say, that's why we wanted to go through the competitive process to guarantee that we were gonna have the bank with the sharpest pencil that morning so we can get the best and most cost-effective result for the county. So, moving on to slide three, this gets into the final pricing results, the coupons and yields that go to calculate that true interest cost I just walked through. Right now, in the interest rate environment, bonds are being sold at a premium, meaning that investors are wanting a higher coupon or cash flow payment versus what the yields are at this current, currently for a AA3 credit. You can see that right now, investors are willing to pay higher than 100 cents on the dollar, as you can see in that far right column for the price, being higher than 100. And so, as a result of that, we're able to generate a premium, and that in turn is we're not able to, we're able to issue less bonds, given that we're having to get, generate that premium. So, the county was able to only issue 58.2 million in bonds, but being able to fund the 61.6 million, that will go into a project fund to fund that portion of the jail expansion. So, in turn, issuing lower, issuing fewer bonds results in us having to pay interest on a fewer amount of a par amount. So, we're happy with the premium that the county was able to receive. On slide four, this gets into the debt service, the principal and interest payments that the county will be paying over the 20-year life of this bond issuance. We structured, as part of that plan of finance that this board approved, we put the principal upfront and structured it with this upfront scenario, as you can see in those first six years, due to the fact that the SPOLOST had allocated 51 million towards this project specifically. And so, what we have done is we've structured the first six years so that the debt service would equal the 51 million that will be allocated towards this in future SPOLOST collections, as you can see in that blue bar in the bottom left, being just under 51 million. So, the county will be able to sufficiently repay the debt service with future collections over the next six years. You can see the next 12, or 12 to 13 years, the level debt service payment's gonna be just under 2 million. But, one thing that's great about this sale for the county was that, in, back in May, when we presented the plan of finance, our planning rate was taking into account the 61.5 million that we needed from fund for this project, and the overall debt service, or the total debt service for that was about 84.5 million. Well, we're pleased to report that we came back at 78.9 million, as you can see in the bottom right, of total debt service paid. So, we're five and a half million dollars in debt service savings, lower than what we originally were planning for. So, that's just a great result for the county. We also came in just under 100, or just over $100,000 under our cost of issuance, which is paying the legal fees, the advisory fees, and the rating agents' fees, et cetera, that are able to execute this transaction. Finally, on the last slide here on slide five, this just kind of shows our next steps. You know, today, or earlier this morning, we had the bond sale at 10:45. Just before this meeting at 5 o'clock, the Public Facilities Authority approved the supplemental bond resolution, as the county attorney just laid out. And now, we're here currently at the Board of Commissioners meeting to approve the county resolution, which again incorporates all of the interest rates, dates that will be needed, that we were within the parameters resolution that was approved earlier back in June. The bonds are already validated by the county attorney, so we can have a short close after this Board of Commissioners meeting. There'll be a couple of closing documents and closing logistics that we'll need to take care of, but we'll be able to close in just over two weeks on August 21st. The appendix contains the cash flow of how we calculated that upfront principal structure and illustrates how we have come in, there will not be any negative cash flow, and the SPOLOST collections that have been projected will not reach a deficit based off of what we're preliminarily projecting. And so, that just kind of breaks down how that 51 million is gonna be allocated towards the repayment on those early first six years on the debt service and the bonds. But, I really appreciate you giving me the time to present these results, and congratulations on this terrific result for the county. But I'll open it up now for any questions from any members of the board.
I don't think we have any questions right now.
Okay, that sounds good.
Mr. Akins, in regard to this issues or anything, any action that we need to take right now?
Yeah, yes, you need to approve the resolution.
Okay.
That's been presented.
All right, so, moving forward here, do we have any discussion on this issue from the board? Hearing none, I'm gonna ask for a motion on this issue.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so, before we get into our zoning, y'all, we've got some open seats up in here. I'm gonna ask you, folks in the audience, if you'll do me a favor, if you have an open seat next to you, will you just raise your hand up? Ladies and gentlemen, they're standing in the back, we gonna be here a while. If y'all would, you can come in here and sit down, and I'll tell you a little secret. It'll stay a lot cooler in this room if we can get in here and shut those doors and keep the air conditioning in here. I also go ahead and tell you that, once we get done with your particular zoning issue, if you'd like to leave, you are not obligated to sit through this whole meeting unless you just wanna stay for the entertainment. Got anybody else in the back that wants to move in? All right, before I entertain a motion to approve the zoning agenda, do we have any discussion or modification desired by the county manager of the board? Hearing none, I'm gonna ask for a motion on this, the zoning agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Thanks.
All in favor? All right, zoning agenda's been approved with unanimous decision. Mr. James Pope, I believe we're at number one.
All right, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll say, I've had, Mr. Chairman, on some numbers for housing that a few of the Commissioners asked me to gather, as a result of a Georgia Tech housing study, trying to get an idea of what the housing numbers are in the pipeline for development. I don't know, do you want me to try and go through that now, or is that, do we need a?
Yeah, I want you to go ahead and do it right now.
Okay. We can bring that up on the screen. I guess it was last month, we had Georgia Tech come in and present the housing, results of the housing study for Bullock County. It was a four-county study. And, as a result, again, a few of the Commissioners asked to try and get an idea of the number of units that are in the development pipeline, and just real briefly, what I consider from sketch plan, which is a formal approval by the Planning and Zoning Board, working through preliminary plans, and then a final platted subdivision, which are, which makes lots available for sale and construction. Currently, we have 1,820 units, which are in either approval stage, planning stage for design, or number of lots available for a house, a house permit. So, again, that's, that's number of lots that we would think in the next two to five years would likely build out. Obviously, taken, taken out of the economy would have some, some impact on that if things slowed down or whatnot. But, next, I just reported on tonight's numbers and next month's numbers. Under review, we have 332 units, potential units for approval. And then, since 2021, which really is when, I guess, development kind of picked up in Bullock County, and are likely to develop in the next two to five years, 724 units. So, overall, what I consider in our pipeline for development is 2,876. And that's, you know, down to the lot number, but that varies from day to day based on permits and whatnot. So, also included for the Commissioners, the number of lots or units available or in process from City of Statesboro and the City of Brooklyn, who has, got a development of regional impact correspondence for a 200, 728-unit Waterford subdivision. So, with that being said, Mr. Chairman, that, that's the unit count update as a result of the Georgia, or, you know, as a result of the Georgia Tech housing study and kind of frame of reference there. So.
Thank you.
Let go. Okay.
I asked James Pope and his staff that he would bring us up to date on the number of houses that were available in this county, and he did so. And if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, y'all put that back up. Based on the Georgia Tech study, which was made by the Center for Economic Development Research at Georgia Tech. Now, that's where all those geniuses and lawyers come from. So, when you add up the number of available houses, you have 8801. Now, Mr. Pope's analyzation was over a five-year period. So, when you, Georgia Tech was over an eight-year period. Now, when you break that down, that's 977 houses per year. When you amateurize it over five years, we've got 180% houses on the books for the next five years that is needed by the Georgia Tech study. The 881 represents enough houses for nine years on the books, based on the Georgia Tech Thank you, Mr. Pope.
That being said, let's move on to number one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see if we can get our, okay. Our agenda item number one is a rezon request by Turtle Landing Investments LLC, which is for approximately 71 acres from Ag 5 to an R80 zoning designation, which would be for the purpose of creating a single-family subdivision. The property is located on Sinkhole Road and Ephesus Church Road, and Mr. John Spandell serves as agent. Staff recommends some conditions in the, in the staff report if approval is granted. Planning and zoning commission recommended a denial by unanimous five-to-zero vote. And for the board, I did pass out the, a letter from Mr. John Spandell, which is, was requested, that says he'll be out of state on August 5th, and respectively, request to change the date for, for the zoning hearing until the next Commissioners meeting on September 2nd, 2025. So, again, I think with some guidance from Jeff, Mr. Akins, you know, if we wanna go through it all, and then y'all decide if you wanna hear it, because we did hear this in our last month meeting, but. Mr. Akins, do you have any?
Well, I'll just add that ordinance allows the Commissioners to defer up to 45 days, but it can be deferred further than that with the consent of the applicant. And I think this is a reasonable request, because I, you know, the reason it was deferred last month is because of a mistake on our part, county's part. So, he was here, prepared for that night, and I guess, I'm assuming he probably had this scheduled, you know, prior to that. So, I think it's a reasonable request for him to defer it. I don't, did y'all contact some of the people, James?
Mary Deloach did contact or attempt to contact those that spoke in our last meeting to let them know, you know, there's a possibility that it may be deferred, but obviously, without a decision from the board, we couldn't say one way or the other. So, I would suspect there are some folks here tonight, but.
I mean, I, it seems to me like it's a reasonable request. I don't, I'm not aware of any, you know, gamesmanship here. I think he probably had a trip scheduled out of town and was, was here last month, prepared to go forward, but was not allowed to because we, you had to defer it because of the advertising issue. I guess what I'm saying is I would recommend that you grant his request and defer it to the September meeting.
Any discussion from the board on this?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we move to defer it to the September meeting, at request of Mr. John Spandell.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? Hearing none? We're gonna go ahead and call for a vote? All in favor? So, motion carries to defer until next month unanimously.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll move forward, if that's all right? Everyone?
If y'all wanna move in to fill in some of these seats, you're welcome to do that. Okay, Mr. Pope, I think you go ahead and start.
Thank you. Agenda item number two is a rezon request by Michael Mallard, who's requesting a rezon from Ag 5 to an R80 residential, 80,000-square-foot zoning of 24 acres for the purpose of creating a single-family subdivision. This property is located on Cleto Road. Staff recommends approval of the request with conditions. Planning and zoning commission recommended a denial by five-to-zero vote. And, this case was previously heard last month by this board, and again, it's backed due to advertising reasons. But, I will say that we did update all of the signs, the zoning signs, at each of the locations that was deferred to this month. So, everything was updated and reabver, or, and advertised according to zoning procedure law. All right, again, this property is located on Cleto Road, showing here, it's located in an open, open-spaced character area. And this is the, the property here, there are currently a few homes on the, on the property just as it's split out. This proposed rezoning would add an additional five lots to what's presently there. And this was the proposed sketch plan that was provided by the applicant, and presently, the property is used. As I, as I previously stated, there are a few homes on the properties, but other, other than the single-family homes, it is used in agricultural use. And then, we did update the sign, as mentioned previously. So, I go back to the development plan that was provided, and I'll ask Mr. Michael Mallard if he could approach the podium.
Hello. How are y'all?
Good, thank you.
Okay, I bought this land in 2004, and I've been living on it since roughly then. I built a few houses. I have electrical license, air conditioning license, contractor license. I have electrical engineering degree, and I build these houses right by myself. I hire some things out, like, I put foam insulation in them now, so they're really efficient homes, they're really neat little homes. They run out really fast, and I would like to build five more, according to the planning and zoning vote. If I got it to R80, it would allow me to build five more houses on it, and that wouldn't be very crowded at all. I've also been told that I would have to get a driveway paved in there, and I've already talked with Woods Paving about that, and it's gonna take effect soon as this goes through and get that taken care of. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. I'd just like for everybody to allow me to build five more houses. These nice factories have bought everybody jobs around, that's where I'm going now, when I get out of here, is going to work, and be nice to have some more residents to help pay taxes and provide these nice factories with some workers that can keep some of this money in the county instead of letting it go to other counties. Be nice to, and nicely saw that picture that James had up earlier. And nicely saw that picture that James had up earlier, that they were fairly neat little houses, efficient, because I'm using foam insulation in them.
We have John Smith.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm John Smith. I live in Cleto, over on Franklin Road. I've been in Cleto about 40 years, and I've talked to a lot of people in Cleto. I've found nobody who really wants this in Cleto. There's five widow women that live within a half a mile of me, and they don't want this. But they're not going to come up here and tell you they don't want it. They're going to tell other people, and they're going to tell their neighbors, but they're not going to come tell y'all. And there's a lot of people in Cleto that feel like that. And so it's a few people like me and some others that are probably going to speak that they get up here in the uncomfort zone and try to talk with y'all. Whenever these houses started popping up in this area, it was Ag 5, it's still Ag 5. And I remember whenever they started doing these rules, and Ag 5 was not set up for what is done right here. And I remember the question being asked to this board, you know, what you're going to do about situations like that there now? And they say, we're going to use a common sense approach. And we don't see that that's been done with the situation like it is now. Now we fix to intensify that, make it even worse. And regardless of what it looks like, and I'm sure there'll be some pictures that you see of that, but it's a subdivision. It says that right there on that map, that that's what they're trying to do. And while I've been studying the county's subdivision rules and bylaws, and these nine homes, again, are trying to skirt under some of the rules, because he does nine, well, he can get by with things, then if you do 15, you can't get by with. I just found out tonight that they plan on paving that road. Well, if you're going to pave that road, then there's drainage that's got to be put in. That's in the bylaws. You've got to have a retention or detention pond, whichever one the EPA requires for this subdivision. You know, I've seen none of that on here. There's not a cul-de-sac at the end of that road. You know, that's mentioned in your rules, and there's a lot of other safety things that should be addressed, other than people say, I don't want that, you know, even though people don't want it. I'm going to run through these real quick, because I know my time is short, and I know other people want to speak. The well system that he's got, he's planning to use with this, you know, you've got these homes, you've got people living in them. These are not apartments, these are houses. And is there going to be... Is the water going to be inspected like you do in these other subdivisions? I've seen nothing mentioned about that. Who's going to take charge of that? If this is a private road, who's going to maintain that? You can't do it with a tractor and a backhoe. You know, it's got to be equipment. But this water system, the well that's supplying these houses that are there now, is not even owned this property. So eventually, this stuff will be sold, because these are houses. It may be a year, maybe 20 years. None of us live forever, so somebody else is going to own this one day. And then what we're going to do, you know? There's a lot of these questions have been brought to me and some that I see from studying this. Another thing, subdivisions have to have an HOA, and it has to be registered, it has to be named. Haven't seen any of that, nothing mentioned about that. These are rules y'all come up with, not us. The speed limit out on that road is 55. I hadn't heard anything about a deceleration lane coming in. And he's got houses really on both sides of the road, so people are going to have to turn to cross lanes. So you're going to be sitting there if traffic's coming. That lot number nine right there, that's already got a house sitting on it, does not use a drive. It uses the ditch. They go down in the ditch, and when they come out, they come out the ditch. Well, the ditch is sitting like this. So whenever they're coming out, and the grass is three foot tall, and it's always three foot tall, sitting like this, you're trying to look back towards Cleto, you really can't see until you get up. Then something's coming, then you've got to stop, and the front end of that car is in the road. Well, that's a problem, because I've come through there, and that's happened already. So that's a safety issue right there. And these are things that's got to be dealt with. You know, if we're going to approve this, this has got to be dealt with. Mentioned the drainage basin. Lot number three, there's already a house sitting on lot number three. That's 1,250 feet from Cleto Road. And when it's raining, you can't get a fire truck or an ambulance back there right now. But I'm getting stuck. And don't take my word on it. I hope y'all rode by there and looked at that, that that house is sitting 1,200 feet off Cleto Road. And everybody else, you know, we... These subdivisions, they've got to have that prepared. House catches on fire, safety people have to get in there. I don't know how they're going to do this right here. And another thing is, like I said, when these houses sell, that's a concern with the water not being on this property, not the right kind of road. You can't just come in there and pave a road. You've got to have these drainage, and it's got to drain somewhere. None of this has been mentioned, and none of this has been brought to anybody's attention. I appreciate your time. If I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to.
Dean Roberts.
Right here, I made a mess, man. Something y'all take a look at. I'm going back in. As y'all know, I'm Dean Roberts. Seems like I'm breaking record up here trying to talk, but I live right across the road from where he's trying to build these nine homes, and I've been there for over 25 years, trying to make this my home, or made it my home, hopefully. But I don't have any problem with Mr. Mallard, but I do have a problem with what he's trying to do here. He's building a very low-budget home, and these homes, he's renting to people that don't have the same respect as our neighbors up and down Cleto Road have for their property or anything, really. Just last week, I... Just to say something about some of the people, but it's... I'm sitting there, and there's a guy pacing back and forth across the road, have no clue what's going on, stopping cars. I can just only assume what was going on with him, but anyway. And then he's got some that ride four-wheelers, and they don't know property lines at all. I had to have that taken care of. And when you have this type of home, and they... The appearances like they are, this is what kind of people it's going to bring to the community. I don't think it's good for us. I can only imagine what building these, I guess it'd be nine more homes or whatever, however many more he's talking about would do, but I mean, it's obvious if anybody can ride by and see the... What we have there, and it's not pretty at all. And I hope y'all will take my thoughts into consideration on voting for this thing. And I thank y'all.
Garrett Saul.
My name's Garrett Saul. I live close by on TH Lee Road, you know, within about a two-mile drive of this proposed plan. Some things I want to reinforce from previous, the state of these homes and the current plan for what he plans on developing, I don't believe will bring wealth and increased value on this area. The own fiscal economic impact study provided by the Planning and Zoning Office said that this would be a $7,000 negative impact to the county over a seven-year period. I don't believe that it will bring up the tax base that is definitely needed now with the state of the county budget. And with the recent school millage rate proposed increase, also, I don't think we're going to get value out of these homes to help with that situation either. I just wanted to bring that up. And also, the state of these homes, like Mr. Dean said in previous speakers, I would like for y'all to take that into consideration, and the rental versus the ownership of a home and the pride that goes in there. I don't believe that with his plan for renting these homes is going to bring wealth and value to the area. I would like to ask if there's anybody in attendance today that is against this from the area? If you please raise your hand or stand. And on the flip side, I'd like to ask if anybody is for this. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Tommy Robinson, got five seconds.
So just a couple...
Just a minute before you start.
Yes, sir.
Now, I did not math this right and realize that there was this many people on here. Can you just give each one of these two last speakers two minutes to speak, please?
Thank you. So, good afternoon. Very quickly, won't rehash the things that have already been said, but do want to point out that within three miles of these, where this is being proposed, there are 366 houses already approved on Cleto Road. 366. There's approximately 30 houses that have direct access onto Cleto Road, from 301 to Highway 24. They're going to add 366. Those homes are under construction, or the property is being developed to add those homes. So that's in addition. This location is also about three miles outside of the suburban development zone. So it is not inside the plan, the 2045 plan, and it is in addition to houses that have already been approved, which we saw earlier exceeds the need for the next five to eight years. So, thank you.
And Ms. Brenda Robinson.
I'll defer my time instead of just reiterating what's already been said.
Thank you.
And I've also got an email from Coastal Communities United that has spoke against each one of these zoning issues that's been brought up tonight, and I'm just going to have it entered into the minutes here. So we have no further speakers. Do the commissioners have any questions or discussion on this issue? Hearing no questions or discussion, I'm going to call for a motion on this issue.
Motion to deny.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of denying this rezon? Motion carries to deny this unanimously. Mr. Pope, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, agenda item number three is a rezon request by Ms. Beverly Kennedy, who submitted application to rezon approximately six acres from an Ag 5 zoning to an R80 residential 80,000-square-foot zone, which will be for the purpose of subdividing the existing parcel into two, two separate parcels, potentially three total. Property is located at 1584 Old River Road South. Staff recommends approval of the request, and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by five-to-zero vote. Again, this was a case heard last month, and we did update the sign and have re-advertised everything according to zoning procedure law. For reference, the star is the general location on Old River Road. This is the current zoning of the property, Ag 5. Surrounding properties are Ag 5. One single-family home on the property currently. And then this would be the division of the parcel, which, as proposed, two acres would be able to be separated from the parcel. And here's the property as it sits currently. And then we, again, zoning notice signed with a date change. If... I will say that if the owner had a family member that was wanting to acquire the two acres, they would be able to split it out under a family provision by ordinance and an Ag 5 zoning, however, because the two acres is, you know, for it to go to a non-family member, or sale, or gift, or whatever, that's why the rezoning was suggested and required. Otherwise, like I said, if it was a related family member, they could do this without any zoning change. But anyway, I just wanted to, again, remind the commissioners of that. With that, I'll ask Ms. Beverly Kennedy if you could approach the podium.
I just want my best friend to build a house beside me with her husband.
We have anybody in opposition?
Yes.
Okay. And we don't have anybody in opposition to this that's signed up to speak. Do the commissioners have any questions or comments they'd like to make? Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
I have asked to rescuse myself from this vote based on a family relationship. She's on my mama's side. I think we're second cousins. She babysat my children. If you'll look in the pictures, that pile of debris was when the tornado hit there, destroyed her mom and daddy's home. I don't want to brag, but me and my son and about five others, we put that pile of trash out there from that house. When we went to be trained as commissioners, we were told if there was any air of a conflict of interest, you needed to rescuse yourself. Now, I've been challenged on this, so I'm going to defer to Mr. Akins and let him make that decision whether I am eligible. By Bullock County, he says I am, whether I should vote on this or not.
Well, I... The ordinance, the zoning... Is this microphone working? Can y'all hear me?
I hear you.
Okay.
You're on the line.
All right. The zoning procedures law, the conflict of interest there, only applies, I believe, to spouses and children. Maybe parents. But anyway, it doesn't go beyond that. Now, we have this, you know, our ethics ordinance that applies to spouses, children, grandchildren, stepchildren, grandparents, but I'm not aware of anything that would apply to a second cousin, or... So I... My advice, because the ordinance does also say that unless you have a conflict of interest, that you should vote on a matter. So I think that might be too remote. I don't think it would be disqualifying, but if you feel, for some reason, that you can't be fair and impartial, then that's up to you, if you feel like you... I don't... If you feel like you, I don't think you legally have to recuse yourself, but if for some reason you feel like you can't be impartial, then...
That was my initial request, to be rescued.
Mm-hmm.
So, just to clarify, I've been called a lot of things over the years, but a genealogy expert has never been one of them. Mr. Davis, you're saying that you cannot be impartial and fair in this issue? Okay. I'm going to ask you to step on out, then. Now that we've got that issue clarified, do we have any other questions or comments that we need to make on this issue?
Mr. Chairman, I motion to approve the request.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of this rezone, please raise your hand. Okay? Motion passes for, or, excuse me, is there anybody that opposes this?
Okay.
Okay. We've got a late runner there. Okay. Motion carries to rezone this piece of property unanimously. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, you can come back up here and go to work again now.
Mr. Chairman, I think he's out of this next one, too, so he might have stayed.
Never mind. Just keep your seat right there.
All right. Agenda Item Number Four tonight is a rezone request by the John and Marie Honeycutt Family L-L-L-P, which, the application for rezoning is for approximately 51 acres to go to, from an Ag-5, Ag-5 Highway Commercial to an R-8 residential 8,000-square-foot lot minimum size, for the purpose of creating a single-family subdivision. The property is located on US Highway 80 East, and Mr. Steve Russian will serve as agent. Staff recommends approval of the request with conditions, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a denial by unanimous five-to-zero vote. Again, this case was heard last month by the board, but deferred to tonight. We did update the sign on the property and re-advertized according to zoning procedure law. And for reference, the star gives you the approximate location. It's on Highway 80 between Brooklyn and Statesboro, just east, southeast of the Burke-Caulter Road intersection on 80. You see here, this is the current zoning map. Really, this area has a mix of zoning. Highway Commercial zoning came through, I think, with the initial zoning map in '94. And then, we've had some multifamily develop along Burke-Caulter, additional multifamily on the, I guess, the northeast portion, further up Burke-Caulter Road to the north. Adjacent properties do have an existing mobile home park and a mobile home park zoning across the road or across Highway 80. So, you really get a mix of zoning. To the south, you have Ag-5 zoning. There is, with this, well, previous zoning has introduced municipal water and sewer into the area, which will serve nearby developments, which would make this property, make it possible for this property to be served by the City of Statesboro Water and Sewer Service. This is the property as it currently is, of course, by aerial. It's agricultural or Ag use. There are some wetlands on the property, primarily on the south end of the property. And as shown by the sketch plan here, the development proposes no disturbance of the wetlands. And, again, the blue areas would be, I guess, acknowledgement that there's retention or detention ponds for stormwater control. And these are photos of the property at the initial time that we placed the sign.
Is that a runoff?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And then this is the modified sign after our last meeting. And with that, I think we do have a site plan that was, I think there was another site plan. Mr. Russian, do you have, you probably have that exhibit?
Especially the same one with the, with the, with the railway.
Right. So, the conditions also anticipate requiring some entry-exit point onto Highway 80 directly and one onto Hagan Lane. So, based out of what we heard in Planning and Zoning Commission, staff added a few conditions, but no additional changes have been made to the staff report since last month's Board of Commissioners meeting. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Steve Rushing, who is agent for the applicant.
Thank you, James. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, as you know, I'm Steve Rushing, attorney here in town, and tonight I am representing the applicant, the John and Marie Honeycutt family, limited partnership. Its general partner is the Honeycutt Trust, and Jim Davis is the trustee. The limited partners are his wife and her sister, who inherited this property from their parents, John and Marie Honeycutt, who farmed it for years. I should mention here that Mr. Honeycutt acquired this property in 1945 after returning from World War II. With me tonight to assist is our engineer from Hussey-Gate-Bell, Hayden Rollins. And you did hear from me last month on this same matter, so I will attempt to just summarize my points that were made in support of the Honeycutt's application. This property is proposed to be developed as a single-family detached neighborhood. As you see, it is located along Highway 80 East and Hagan Lane. In our area granted, we expect our engineers will work directly with the county engineers and the state G-Dot to follow their directions for the best and safest access to this neighborhood from those two roads. We are requesting that 51 acres of the 65-acre tract be rezoned as R-8, which would have a minimum block size of 8,000 square foot. I think our plan, the smallest ones were 8750. We're taking this property partly from the Highway Commercial Zone and the rest from the Ag-5 zone. And again, as Mr. Pope indicated, this is only possible to do this type of neighborhood with the municipal water and sewer, which would connect about 800 feet or so to the northwest. This development, as you see, would contain 134 single-family home lots that was tendered with our application. As, again, Mr. Pope indicated, we would have no impact on the wetlands, and there are no floodplains on this tract. We will have some proposed detention or retention ponds that will control the surface water. There, of course, will be some common areas as well. The proposed density is not new to this area. Just to the west of this neighborhood is a duplex neighborhood, which would be similar or greater density. Same for the mobile home park to the east would have similar or greater density. And I would note that both of those require septic tanks and drain fields and would have community water. This one would have none of that, no septic tanks, drain fields, and no water wells. So, I think that makes it a clear, an R-8 zone, a positive for those reasons. The standards of review that you are, that you use in making your decisions do support our rezone. I think the staff's report did a great job at addressing those, and I think they've got it right, and they recommended approval and suggested the six conditions that they have indicated, which includes the paving of a portion of Hagan Lane from our entrance to Highway 80 and to grant or donate to the county 30-foot of right-of-way for Hagan Lane. We've reviewed those conditions with our property owners, and they have no problems with any of those conditions should you choose to grant this with those conditions. That first standard in making this is addressed by the staff, but it is regarding the compatibility, the compatibility to propose use to existing or adjacent nearby property. I've already mentioned the mobile home park and the duplex neighborhood that joins this property to the east and west. There's commercial lots to our north. So, our focus is going to be to the property to the south when we develop this property. We believe it will have minimal adverse impact. This was also determined by the county staff as indicated in their report. We will meet or exceed the county's buffer standards. We also understand that the neighbors to the south have experienced some uncontrolled surface water flow from this tract in the past. And I can just tell you, we've engaged some of the best engineers in this part of the state with Hussey-Gate and Bell, and they will engineer a surface water control system. In fact, state law requires that the water flow be no worse after development than it was prior to the development. Staff report positively addresses the other factors governing the grant of a rezone, which chiefly support our application, and the main one being the comprehensive plan. The Bullock Smart 45 Plan just adopted, assigned this area to a suburban neighborhood character area, which fully anticipates and provides for an R-8 zoning classification. We believe the Smart Plan anticipated the extension of the water and sewer to this area. It certainly took into account its proximity to the State Highway 80. It does lie within the Brooklyn and southeast Bullock School zones, but remember, even if this zoning is approved tonight, the project is looking at a two-to-five-year commencement of the development in full build-out within a five-to-10-year period, so certainly sufficient time for the school board to anticipate what additional students may enter from this development. So, with the anticipated buffers, the staff suggested conditions, we assert that in addition to meeting the comprehensive development plan, it does reflect a reasonable balance between the promotion of public health and general welfare with the property owners wanting to use their property as they wish. Our engineer can address questions regarding infrastructure, but before I sit down, on behalf of the John and Marie Honeycutt Family Partnership, we would like to respectfully request that you approve this application, allow them to develop their property as an R-8 zone, and we'll save the rest of our time.
And we have Deborah Hatton.
Now, before she gets up here, there were six people that have signed up to speak against this, so if you just give them each two minutes to speak, I'd appreciate it.
I have two minutes.
Two minutes.
I can't get all of this in, but two minutes.
I have a copy of your statement, ma'am, and I'll make sure it gets entered into the minutes.
She can have my two minutes if she needs it. All right. I'll read as fast as I can. I appreciate you listening to our concerns. My name is Deborah Hatton, and I would like to thank you for allowing me to express the concerns with the proposed zoning change of the Honeycutt property from Ag-5 to R-8. My family and I own 193 acres adjacent to the Honeycutt property, which was inherited by my grandfather many, many years ago. I'm speaking for my family and many other landowners in the area that are opposed to this zoning change. We presented our concerns to the Bullock County Planning and Zoning Committee on June 17th, and they, of which it was denied. We are concerned with the density of this development, given the reasons I'm about to mention. We feel this could start a trend that might continue to move toward Brooklyn, and we also feel that this will bring the property values down in our area. We are also concerned with the watershed downstream from this development. We are aware that retention ponds have been placed on the rendering. Those don't always work with the rains that we've experienced lately. A creek runs behind my mother's house, and with more development, there will be more money, more water possibly causing flooding, increased water, wetlands for us and my neighbors down the creek bed. Taking away property, that will be of less or no value. And the one question we have is who's responsible for this, if it happens in the future. Another point of concern is Hagan Lane. The development has two roads entering and exiting the property onto Hagan Lane, with there being 134 houses. There could possibly be 250 cars using Hagan Lane once, but probably more than once per day. This is not feasible due to the road being as-named Hagan Lane. It is a dirt lane that's not passable by two meeting vehicles without one stopping to pass the other. It's also a road that has fewer no-ditches for which water to run. Our property, on the last hard rain, had like four cars to get stuck because they were just, you know, sliding all over the road. Let's see, let me skip that. Okay. Another condition for this parcel is to have the direct road to Highway 80. There, can I keep going? See, she gave me two.
Yeah, she gave you two.
No? Yeah?
You have her time, your time?
Okay. There will be an arterial road from the property, which should, which would be Highway 80. So, we were wondering about if there is study that's been done by the Georgia DOT, and it seems like it would not be feasible to have another turn lane off 80 so close to the intersection and the turn lane already being there. So, how can you approve it if there's not accessibility? Another concern of ours is the type of development and it ruining the SEB school district with it already being inundated with students not having adequate housing and you properly being able to educate them because of overcrowding. And, let's see, the last point is the points of contention, the, you know, the final recommendation packet on pages 61 through 62. Land use planning was positive, fiscal economics was a negative, school was a negative because of the SEB system, I mean, school system. Water and sewer. I spoke with the City of Statesboro, and it has not, no one has spoken with the city concerning this piece of property, and according to the city, the sewage would have to be pumped from the property to the pump station on SNS Railroad, which is more than 800 feet. Solid waste receives a negative because we have the busiest trash deposit. The environmental is a negative, was a negative, and I've already given you all the reasons because of the runoff and other things. The traffic and road received a negative. The emergency management received a negative. Law enforcement received a neutral, but after speaking with Sheriff Noel Brown, he said that the sheriff's department would definitely be impacted. He said there would be 400 or more people in the system to deal with, and he would be happy to discuss this with anyone questioning this response. The AMS received a neutral, recreation a positive, and there being three positives, six negatives, changed from five because of the response of Sheriff Noel Brown, and two neutral. This zoning should be denied because there's more negative than positive points.
Thank you, ma'am. And then, ma'am, can you tell me what your name is, please?
Gerald Fox.
Thank you.
Ms. Cynthia Collins.
My name's Cynthia Collins. I live directly in front of this piece of property. That is my front yard. That's my driveway coming in right there at an angle. I have firsthand experience about this location. I want to give you guys some numbers. Four. Four inches of rain is all it takes for, right now, with the extension of three lanes in front of our property, to flood, come down our driveway and flood out our barn. That's happening right now. Before we add 20. 20 is the number of times that concrete will not absorb water, and you're going to put in driveways and houses and all that. So, I'm going to have 20 times more water coming down the driveway. Let me give you another number. 65. 65 miles an hour. When I cross Burke-Caulter Road, I have to immediately turn on my left turn blinker, slow my car down to like 45. People are honking and beeping because I'm trying to turn left into my driveway. And my brother-in-law actually has a film where a lady barely misses him and spins out in front of him. I mean, and let me give you another big number. We are the historic community of Pretoria, and we have gathered together as a community. And if you add up the families and the land, it's over 725 acres of people that don't want this, because you're talking about four again. You're putting four homes on an acre of land. Is this how we want Bullock County to look? Are we going to be sardines? Is there not going to be a quality of life and quality of homes? Is there not going to be a quality of life and quality of homes placed? Are we not going to have beautiful community? That was our dream when we moved here. And, you know, our community includes firefighters, pharmacists, gunsmiths, farriers, business owners. You know, we are the cross-section of this entire community. This is not how we want Bullock County to look.
I belong with her, so we're across the street. That's true. Until we added this third lane on Highway 80, my barn never flooded. So we already experienced that firsthand. The middle of that cotton field as it stands now is sitting roughly at about 206 foot. My barn's at 192. Deborah's mama's house is further down than that at 184. Further down, last time, Budley Lane, they're down at 177, and all the way down to Grimshaw, which apparently all this is going to become a retention pond, is there. Now, most of the time for good drainage, you're looking between two and four inches, you know, percent rise, which would mean that my place ought to be sitting seven foot. Well, it's double that. Her mama's is three times that. We know where the water's going. 10 to 20 times more runs off of pavement and whatnot, so, and we already got a truck stop coming in. They're at 217. I'm 30 foot below that. So that whole area is going to be running. I'm not sure where you're going to be stopping that. Now, the amount of stuff that they've got over there, based off some rough calculations of 134 homes with driveways, patios, and roads and whatnot, that's 10.2 acres of pavement that's fixing to be put out there. Not counting what that, we're not talking about the commercial stuff yet, well, that's another two and a half acres if you do it based off of what catalyst one of the places are, since we're using them as a record, you know, as a reference, that they have a nice place, but you're going to pave another, and there ain't even no access on that, if that hadn't been addressed. I guess if y'all approve it, then we'll just figure it all out later on. But I'm trying to figure out, you know, where all this is going to come from, and apparently, you know, when they talk about building out, that's the bad thing about that. Whenever it ends up being seven or 10 years, then all of a sudden, the people that are culpable or responsible don't necessarily have to come up and figure out what to do. I guess that's y'all.
Thanks, sir.
Hi, I'm Ben Bowie. I live just east of Brooklyn in a little old piece of dirt out there that I'm proud to call home. But Chairman Bennett, commissioners, staff, I appreciate y'all letting me speak to you tonight in opposition to this zoning. And I'm not going to speak about traffic, I'm not going to speak about schools and that. I want to speak about a safety concern that I have with this property. If you look up there, the blue areas are retention ponds. Every one of them has a house that backs up to it. I see that as a safety concern, because you're going to let a kid's going to get loose one day, and he's going to end up in that pond, one or the other. And don't tell me it don't happen. This happened right here in Bullock County. It's happened in Stilson, it's happened at Mill Creek Park, and we just had a kid fall in the pool. It's supposed to be enclosed. Drowning is the number one cause of death in kids, one to four. I know caretakers and parents are responsible for them, but sometimes you can't keep your eye on a three-year-old or a four-year-old all the time. And I say this because I've had 37 years in the pulp and paper industry, and every time we did a project or started a new process, we did a safety review. I don't think a safety review's been done at this. I don't think a safety review's been done on any of our developments, to tell you the truth. It don't take but one, folks. It don't take but one. And when we did a safety review, we went in there and said, hey, this needs to be done to protect the workers. Who's going to protect these kids? It's our responsibility to protect the kids. Y'all think I'm crazy, that's fine, coming out here with something off the corner, but my background in the industry tells me that this is going to be a safety issue right here.
Thank you.
Cindy Holsey.
I thank y'all for the opportunity to come and talk to you and for y'all to listen to me. I certainly am against another subdivision in our area. We have Cambridge, we have Johnson Run, we have the one up there at the roundabout. And the first thing that happens, which to y'all, this may be a little thing, but for us who live there, this is a big thing. The first thing when people do move out there, they think, or out there, they think, oh, we're in the country, and they buy Junior a four-wheeler or a, or a thing, what you call them? Thank you. All night long, especially weekends, up and down the roads, up and down the roads. And you, you can call the sheriff's department, but the sheriff's department is busy with other stuff. They, they don't need to have to come to us so that we can get a good night's sleep. But it is a problem, and we would ask that you deny, you think, you think about all the little, little things. I went to the trash dump, took some pictures. I was going to try to get them here, but somebody didn't wind up at Jim this morning and tell me how to put them pictures on there. But those trash dumps, every day at the roundabout, they're all just overrunning, overrunning, overrunning. They stink. They are horrible. And you add 134 more homes taking their trash to that dump, it's just terrible. So these may seem like little things to y'all, but we live there, and so we want y'all to consider everything. And another big thing for me is you're taking 51 more acres from the farmers in Bullock County. We've had enough agriculture taken away from the farmers. So please consider all these things, and I do not mean it disrespectful in any way, but Mr. Russian referred to Mr. the Honeycutt, he referred to them as the Honeycutt Girls. The Honeycutt Girls, to my knowledge, have not lived there in 50 years.
Ma'am, your time's up.
They don't know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Robert Lee.
Thank you all for allowing us to speak this evening. At least we'll give y'all something to talk about the rest of the week. I spoke at the last meeting. Mr. Russian, your speech was on point. It made me want to run out and buy one of your lots. Can you tell me your retention ponds, how many acreages?
Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee, I need you to direct your comments to the board, not to the people in the audience.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Well, I need to know, because when Johnson Run was put in, I was told a retention pond was going in, and it ended up being nothing more than a ditch. My situation, I live on Grimshaw Lane. While I may not be in direct contact with this subdivision, I am downstream with the water. When all this structuring all goes in, the shingles, the paving, all that water's going to run in these retention ponds, which sounds good, but it don't take a whole lot of rain to fill up a pond, and then it's going to overflow. My concern is I'm already suffering from water coming from Johnson Run. Years ago, I allowed, it was so bad, I allowed the county, me and the adjacent landowner, allowed them to come in and dig a ditch just to try to get some of that water out of there. But it runs that water into the ditch. Also, the proposed walking trail, I know years ago, when, when Mr. Bill Lee was still alive, he let the county come in and dig a ditch from Hagan, what they call, I always call it railroad bed. From railroad bed, right down to my property line is a ditch, and these two culverts that go under the walk.
Go ahead and finish your sentence, sir.
Yeah. From the walking trail, there's two culverts under there, and every time it rains, I mean, water really comes through there. So I'm facing water coming from both ways now. I'm just afraid that any further development, and I know it's going to happen, but it will end up in my backyard, and I'm already swimming now. So, thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
And we have Hayden Rollins and Attorney Rushing.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Hayden Rollins with Hussy Gay Bell. I'm just going to speak about the engineering-related items. I'll start with utilities. I have had conversations with the city of Statesboro. There's been a little bit of turnover since this project started, so not sure where that information is being relayed that we hadn't talked to them. We have talked. We do have a plan for that if this project is approved. As far as access, we'll work with GDOT to determine where the best access is. Preliminary talks with them. We will have access on Highway 80 if we want it. On the stormwater side, I've talked briefly with the county engineer, Ron Nelson, about this project in particular. We, we have over five acres of stormwater management areas shown on this project, which is plenty for a project for this size. If you look at the past aerial images, you can see that this project has really bad washouts repeatedly every year. Our farmers do a great job of keeping those fields clean, but at the same time, when you have big rain events, that runoff just goes straight off, off-site into wetlands or across the road. With our project, we'll have curb and gutter drainage, we'll have stormwater structures and wet ponds that'll intercept all of that runoff and release it in a manner less than what it is right now. And I can tell you that, that we will work with Ron Nelson to ensure that happens, and as required by Georgia law, we'll be responsible if that does not happen. Thank you.
Mr. Rushing, I believe the rest of the time is yours.
I won't take it all. I just wanted to address one thing that may have been overlooked. There is a condition from the county staff regarding Hagan Lane. If that does end up being one of our accesses through the county engineer and the state engineers, then we would be required to pave Hagan Lane to our entrances on county standards. That means with the ditches and the pavement. And so far as the current issues with the bogging down and so forth, that would be eliminated, certainly with respect to the folks, the folks coming out of this subdivision. And we're also looking to contribute the additional right of way for any future additional service to Hagan Lane going to the south. We appreciate your consideration of this tonight, and I know it's been a long one, but again, we believe that it falls right within what you anticipated with the adoption of the comprehensive plan for this area. That's why we're here, and we feel that was a good guide for us. So we would ask that you adopt what the staff has indicated, their support for this project, and we would ask that you grant our rezon request.
Mr. Rushing, before you sit down, I know the chairman's going to ask if there's any questions, so I've got some.
Yes, sir.
Hussy Gay and Bell, engineer, I can't remember his name. Now, you said, because I've had some calls mainly about entering in on Hagan Lane, but now you just stated that you had confirmation that y'all come in, could come in on Highway 80 if necessary.
Yes, we'll have that talk with GDOT whenever the time comes. We've already had preliminary discussions. We have the distance required for spacing of intersections to allow for access to 80 if we need it.
That's right, okay. And I'm going to give Ron Nelson a minute to gather his thoughts, because I didn't give him a heads up on this, but we have discussed this. Oh, okay, that was one of the main concerns that they had was all the traffic. And I'm going to have Ron Nelson come up, which is retired from the GDOT, from the Georgia Department of Transportation, and is the county assistant county engineer at this point. And it's been stated that if they have to pave Hagan Lane, then it will be by county spec, 60-foot right-of-way ditches paved and all of that. I just want to get every answer to this road situation answered for everybody, not just for them, but for in the future, anybody that lives out there. Now, would you tell me what you told me over a month ago about the walking trail, and I can't keep up with all the roads, what's going to be, that's going to be paved and the drainage, and do you recall that conversation?
Yes, sir, I do. So Ron Nelson, Engineering Department here in the county. We do have active design going on for the walking trail, SNS Greenway Phase 3. That project is moving through, it's going to, we're also going to pave Josh Hagan. So this is from Pretoria Russian Road all the way to Grimshaw, and that's the, the walking trail will be on the north side of the existing Josh Hagan Road, and we'll construct the, the walking trail and also pave Josh Hagan all the way to Grimshaw. And while doing that, we're making drainage improvements as well all the way through there. Additionally, we're also in design for paving Grimshaw Road from Alderman to US Highway 80. So we've got that being designed by Kimley Horn, and then additionally, Grimshaw Lane is also in design, where we're also taking into consideration the existing drainage and making improvements there.
So how much road would be left to be paved?
The only portion that'll be left to be paved would be that portion to close the gap on whatever's not paved from Highway 80 on Josh Hagan Lane back to Josh Hagan Road. And it's approximately 2,500 feet.
I guess the next question will be back to Mr. Rushing. Would, would the Honeycuts have any problem with just going ahead and committing to come out on Highway 80?
We have no problem with that, Commissioner.
So that takes Hagan Lane out of the equation.
Again, if that's what the engineers tell us, that's what we'll do.
Is that?
Just for clarification, you're saying pave, close the gap? Or you're saying just pave the portion back 80?
I'm just, they go in and out of Highway 80.
That's right.
Instead of bothering Hagan Lane. And do their turning lanes, acceleration lanes, and all out on state right-of-way instead of county right-of-way. So therefore, it does not count, it does not cost the county. That's just, wanted to clarify all the paving that's going to be going on and all of that, because I know there was a lot of concerns about 200 people driving up and down Hagan Lane, and it's dirt, which won't be dirt, but...
I don't understand. Are you closing the entrances then on Hagan Lane?
That's what they have just agreed to. That's what they just agreed to. You fine with that? Okay? I'm through with my questions.
That's my driveway? That's my driveway, that's slant right there, so you're going to dump 134 houses out in my driveway?
I have a dash cam on my truck. Give me one minute, and I'll have more than 100 instances of people slamming through the back of my truck, right there on that, on that three-way drive.
That's interesting.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to take 30 minutes of your time? I live right in the corner where, where Hagan and Josh Hagan meet. You guys are going to put a walkway or whatever, you're going to pave that? You're talking about doing away with the water? Where are you going to do away with the water? It has nowhere to go other than to the pond and right behind my, where we live, the pasture into Ms. Hagan's property to her mother's property and vice versa. And then we're going to build this on top of that, and all that water's going to go right to her mother's house, and then it's going to go straight down to all the other people's houses. I mean, nobody's put no thought to this. Everybody wants to do this, but nobody's really put no thought to it. You already have a sewer system coming through.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
I was just trying to find some solutions, is all. I'm not an engineer, I was just trying to, that's all I was trying to do. I think I, I think I found one.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Ma'am, your, your time, the public comment time is done.
What about a water impact assessment?
Ma'am, I appreciate your comments. Any other comments from the commissioners, questions? Any other comments from the Commissioners, questions?
All this dumps, I mean, all this goes to Brooklyn Elementary and Southeast Bullock, right? That's the school zone for this? That's the current zone?
Ma'am, I appreciate that you're passionate about this and that you're concerned. Okay? But you've gotta let us work through the process. Thank you.
I mean, I know Southeast Bullock and Brooklyn and all that's supposed to get a heck of a system out here with schools and all that, but that's still dependent upon the vote that happens in November, then construction and all that. And I mean, the last I saw was at the earliest of 31 to get all the school systems done. And I know Brooklyn Elementary, I think, has got seven trailers right there. And I think Southeast Bullock Middle School is about the same. I'm just not here to punish the kids anymore. You know, with the tax increase, all I kept saying was we don't need to take away teachers from the school system. And I don't wanna add kids to the school system to make them get punished in there, to put all that onto the staff and the teachers that they already got enough to deal with, too. And I mean, and also, a lot of this, I know it's not directly on top of Burke Alter, but you know, the trash receptacle's down there. You know, I mean, a lot of the people, and if you go to the west side of town at all to go over there towards 67, you got to go Burke Alter, 'cause going to the bypass, trying to get in front of Lowe's right now is about a headache as it can be. But I just don't think this- I think Commissioner Connor said it last week, or last time. He said, "We just not ready. This part of the community isn't ready for this." And I know you're talking about the other one down there on 119 Spur. Yeah, I just don't think we're ready for this.
Any other questions or comments? Here are no other questions and comments. I'm gonna call for a motion on this issue.
Motion to deny.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of denying this rezon, please raise your hand and say aye. All opposed to denying this rezon? So the motion to deny fails. Do we have another motion to approve?
I move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do I hear a second?
With the conditions?
With conditions.
Is there any change on those conditions? I don't- I mean, I know Commissioner Rushing mentioned one, but I don't- I'm fine either way, but-
I move to approve with, as it's written, with conditions.
Are we gonna add the condition of the entrance has to come off of Highway 80 to this?
Currently, the conditions state one entrance onto 80 directly and then one onto Hagan Lane. But Mr. Rushing was discussing, I think, where two would go onto US 80 and no access to Hagan Lane.
I'm fine with the conditions, right?
Okay.
So the motion, to clarify here, the motion is to accept with conditions as they're outlined already? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's my motion.
Okay. And your second is the same? Okay. All in favor of approving the rezon with conditions as they're outlined already? All opposed? Motion carries three to two.
It also says R 80 on the thing. It says R 80, which actually isn't even on the zoning website.
Thanks, sir. If y'all would, if you're wanting to leave, now's your opportunity to do so.
Is your email public, open to the public? I will send you every single video from my dash cam from when I get slammed into the back right there on that intersection on Highway 80.
It is public, sir.
Fantastic.
All right.
Mr. Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda item number five is a rezon request by ABA Development LLC. The application to rezon approximately 50 acres from Ag 5 to an R 25 zoning, which would be for the purpose of creating a single-family subdivision. Property is located on Maria Sorrell Road. Ms. Grace Wooton will serve as the agent. Staff recommends approval of the request with conditions. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval. And that vote was four to one. This is the last of our cases that will involve the previous month, so I believe you all are familiar with this one. But for reference, that star is the general location of the property. Again, located on Maria Sorrell Road. Zoning is Ag 5 adjacent properties. You have Ag 5 to the north, a mix of residential zonings to the south and to the east, and some previous industrial use to the northeast. And this is an aerial of the property currently used as agriculture. And this is the development plan that was provided by the applicant. And again, this is the property when we placed the signs initially and after our last meeting. And with that, that's the development plan. So I'll ask Ms. Grace Wooton as agent for the developer. Thank you.
Good evening again. I'm Grace Wooton with Pape Dawson Engineers, and I'm presenting as the agent on this rezon application. I wanna start by thanking you all, the Board of Commissioners and the county staff, and as well as the community for taking the time out of your evening to be here again tonight and allow me the opportunity to speak on this. As mentioned and presented last month, we are requesting to rezon this property to R 25 for the purpose of a relatively low-density, single-family residential neighborhood that complies with Bullock County's comprehensive land plan recommendation and complements the existing surrounding land uses. Staff previously recommended approval with conditions concerning tree canopy, recreational area implementation, and the use of conventional construction. All of these conditions, we are happy to accept if approved. After addressing the one stormwater-related concern at the very first planning and zoning meeting, the Commissioners also recommended approval. I want to conclude by mentioning a few of the highlights that I think it's critical to reiterate from last month. First, per staff, this plan does not negatively impact traffic, utilities, or stormwater. Second, while the comprehensive land plan suggests suburban neighborhoods have two to four units per acre, we are conscious of the natural resources and existing agricultural context and propose a rezon and a site plan that is significantly less dense at only 1.3 units per acre. I also want to emphasize the intention of this rezon and proposed plan is to be developed by local builders and implemented by local subs. Lastly, I want to express my appreciation for the feedback and concerns presented by the neighbors and the community last month. While this initial presentation is very much the same, you all were heard, and your points further motivated more research and discussion on our end, which I'm happy to speak to after giving you all and the Commissioners a chance to, and an opportunity to reiterate and expand upon your original comments and concerns. Thank you.
We have Garrett Sowell.
Good evening again. I'm Garrett Sowell. I live close, about two and a half miles down Cleto Road from this area. There's some challenges I want to give you to this development. My main challenge is density of subdivisions and homes in the area. You've already got Sweetbrier, Eight Point, Stillwater. Just a few miles down the road, you've got Rexford being developed. You've got Silverleaf coming down TH Lee Road being developed. You have developments coming up on Lakeview Road, which is a short drive from here. I think you have the density you need in homes out here. I don't think this is necessarily a need in the Cleto area. I have some safety challenges as well. There's an active railway up in that northeast corner with a transfer station for propane. I don't know how often it is used, but I believe that needs to be evaluated, what a safe exclusion zone from the transfer of propane should be, depending on state laws, state regulations. I don't think that's something that's been brought up. So I would ask that you would consider that that hasn't been challenged before approval. Also, there's a single point of access here off of Maria Soil Road. And that's a hilly road. It doesn't look like in the plans there's any plan for an entrance or exit lane, like a deceleration lane. You're adding 66 homes. You know, roughly, most folks have two vehicles, some have children, three. You're talking 120-plus vehicles hitting that at primetimes. My wife already constantly fusses about trying to get out at 301 in Cleto there. You're adding a lot of traffic there in primetimes, school buses, and that sort of thing. And the safety challenge here also, too, is you only have one entrance and exit for this entire 66-home subdivision. I would just ask that somebody would also challenge that and evaluate that prior to approval if the Commission deems it is approvable. Also, you know, the fiscal economic impact states that this would be $132,000 to the good for the county over a seven-year. It's approximately a 14-year, I mean, a 14% return on the county's investment. I don't know what an appropriate investment would be, but I would like to ask if that's appropriate, if that's gonna sustain long-term. And there again, too, as we have seen in the papers and everybody's seen the last couple of days with the schools asking for money, this is a negative impact on the school system, on your fire and EMS. And it's a neutral on traffic, but I would tend to argue with that. So please, before you approve this, make time to challenge those concerns. Thank you.
There's no one else opposed? If you have anything else you'd like to add at this time, ma'am, you're welcome to do so.
Okay, I wanna speak to the density mentioned for this area. This is, it matches what is currently around, I mean, across the street. You have another R 25, and down the road, you have another R 25. This density, like I said, I mean, we could be proposing 134 lots on the same piece of land, but, and calling it R 8, but we're being conscious of the agricultural context and going with R 25, they're half-acre lots. And ran that through the ITE traffic generator, which is documented and required upon our submittal, which is the indication that there are no traffic impacts. As far as negative impacts with fire, EMS, Sheriff's Department, and school systems, these are general county capacity issues that would be negatively impacted by any development and should not affect this land, this local landowner and local developers' property and development rights. And I guess, just before I end, I just wanna reiterate that the comprehensive land plan, this is a suggested area for this. And, you know, the goal for Bullock County is to have smart growth development. That was what the comprehensive land plan is. And I think that this plan provides you with the epitome of what smart development looks like in Bullock County. And if given the opportunity, the local landowner and local developer I'm representing tonight would be eager to contribute to Bullock County's Smart Growth Initiative. And I just, at the end of it, I graciously ask you to follow the staff and the planning zoning's recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Mr. Sowell, you're the only one that's spoken opposition to this. And there's still time remaining on the clock. If you'd like to speak, you're welcome to it.
No, sir, I don't have any further challenges.
Ma'am, you have anything else you'd like to add at this time? Okay, seeing how both of y'all are gonna yield your time, I'm gonna refer to the Commissioners. Do y'all have any questions or comments? Mr. Davis.
Mr. Pope, on this physical impact, it says using the Envision Tomorrow Regional Physical Impact Tool. Now, I've asked this question before. I know it doesn't include House Bill 581. But now, explain that, that we gonna exceed, the public revenues are gonna exceed expenditures by 132,000, and we keep falling behind with infrastructure. Now, explain how that formula is composed.
Yeah, so the Envision Tomorrow Physical Impact Tool is really a, I would say, a simpler, user-friendly way to measure appropriate or approximate physical impact for any type of development, really. But we use it really in single-family residential developments. And I think it's based on some of the inputs that we have from our budget. And I think this one goes back before we adopted the millage rate, but, or the suggested millage rate. But the, it's really, population weighs heavy in the equation. How much you anticipate the home sales to go for? It tries to capture some of the sales tax that would be generated by the population and just some other, I guess, parameters that the county, and I think there is a school board portion in there. But again, putting in the 2.5 people per unit gives you a population number. 330,000 per parcel would be, I would say, an appropriate sales figure per parcel based on what we see around the county. And then, again, cumulative total at seven years, that's when we're considering that. If it builds out, that's about what we're seeing subdivisions between six and seven years. So beyond seven years, the cumulative benefit would continue to go, grow. But again, it's, you put in SPOSS figures, different things like that. And I didn't write the tool, or I didn't write the software. I just kinda put in our budget figures and run the numbers. But it's an approximate, it's not an end-all-be-all of impacts. There's also intangibles that you, you know, is there a housing need that you may have or other things that the community and you, as the Board, know best in making your decision? You know, when you make approvals, you have trade-offs. And so if it's a negative impact, does it then have other, does it have a workforce housing component or whatnot? So I won't say that it, I guess I would caution to make any decision, whether it's positive or negative, based on the fiscal impact tool. But it's just, you know, something we try to provide that I think gets you close.
It also says on a note here, the physical impact tool is an estimate based on the best available data sources. House Bill 581 just got passed. We voting on a 1% sales tax, FLOSH tax in November. So it's a very unknown. So I think that changes some of this data that this tool would bring forward. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the Board?
The zoning over here by the railroad tracks, is that all heavy industrial? Is that what the HI is? But on the map, it says Ag 5, but on the website, it looks like it's heavy industrial?
HI is our heavy industrial zone.
So it's pretty much around about R 25 and then heavy industrial on the railroad tracks, so?
I think that was some of the old zoning that was anticipated before Gateway on the south end of town and Gateway 2 got developed. So there are some industrial properties up 301 by the airport. And I think that was the intent of that. 301 by the airport, and I think that was the intent of that zoning, but whether the infrastructure's there to support a heavy industrial, I don't, I would probably argue not. But, yeah, there's a lot of industrial property to the south. I think that's a contractor that's previously had a conditional use to, you know, perform their business there.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, some of that HI was rezoned to Ag 5, wasn't it, James? Was it? I think the board undertook that because, you know, it was zoned heavy industrial originally because they thought that's where the industry was going to go, but it didn't turn out that way.
That was before my time, so I can't, I mean, I could do some research on that, but I can't speak to that.
I don't know if that's why that's showing it as Ag 5. You say, Commissioner Newkirk, you think it's, what's shown on here is Ag 5, is HI?
Yeah, it looks like it's all HI through there, so I was just trying to, because on the sheet that they provided, it was Ag 5, but on the website, it looks like it's HI, so that's why, I was just curious.
I think at the time, as all it came about, that was mostly where the industry was at.
Right, that's right. But I know some of that was rezoned. I don't know, I don't know if this was part of it.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a motion on this issue.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept this rezoning with the conditions.
Second. All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries forward at 2. I believe we've got three more of these issues on the zoning agenda. We're almost two hours into this. Do we need to take a recess?
Yes, sir.
Be fine, yeah.
Can I get a motion for about a five-minute recess?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We'll be read adjourned at 7:28. Call it 7:29. All right, I got 7:30, actually, and we've got all the commissioners' backs, so let's go ahead and get this started.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Michael. All right, agenda, agenda item number six is a rezon request by Mr. Jason Dunn. The application is to rezon 23, approximately 23 acres from the Ag 5 zoning to a heavy industrial zone, which would be for the purpose, or which would be for operating a heavy manufacturing facility specifically to process vegetative debris. The property is located at 276 Highway 119 North. Cody Rogers will serve as the agent for the applicant. Staff recommends a denial of the rezon. However, if it is approved, staff recommends conditions which are contained in the staff report. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends a denial, which was a vote 2 to 1. All right, general location is shown here on the star overlaid on the character map of Bullock County. At Highway 80 and 119, roughly a parcel to the east, just the zoning for the property and surrounding properties. Highway 80 being the road depicted on the left, lower left-hand corner of the property. 119 is the property majority facing the, facing this property. Other surrounding parcels are zoned Ag 5, and there is one highway commercial property with provisions. This is an aerial of the property that our software pictometry provided, so aerial flight. Again, the property is used currently in agricultural use, timber. There was a building permit provided to the applicant in December to build a pole barn for agricultural use. This is a site plan that's provided by the applicant, which the hatch pattern shows the area of use, and the applicant's agent can maybe further refine where, where and how the process would work. These are photos of the property from 119, when I visited the site to place a sign according to zoning procedure law. Again, there's a small area that was cleared and a pole barn placed on the property. This is 119 looking to the, I guess, east, northeast, and this is looking back towards 80. Around the curve, you would see, you would approach Highway 80. And this is across 119. And there are some pieces of equipment on the property currently. And then, this is the cleared area that I guess is in some form of current use, not exactly. There's no equipment or active, or activity going on when I visited the site. And Highway 80 would be just on the top portion of the photo. There is a commercial, small-scale plant nursery at that 119 and 80 intersection. Surrounding properties are either Ag use or have contained single-family properties, or single-family structures. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Cody Rogers', agent for this.
Thanks, sir. Can you bring the site plan back? Cody Rogers, EMC Engineering. So, unfortunately, Mr. Dunn, the applicant, could not be here today. He had a planned vacation. He was out. He did make it to the Planning and Zoning Meeting, so don't take his absences not taking this matter seriously, please. Site plan. The hatch pattern, the cross pattern here, is a potential cleared area outside of dedicated vegetated buffers. The big area in the middle that's also a green hatch but has the grass pattern, you truly can't see from the scale, is a wetland area. We wouldn't plan to have any impacts there. Just because that cross hatch pattern is there, doesn't mean we would necessarily clear that whole area. We're definitely open to additional buffering if required. There is no building planned at all whatsoever. So, when we say operate, I forget how you termed it, operate industrial development business, however.
Heavy manufacturing facility.
There we go, facility. That's the word for it. So, there is no building here, there's no plan. Mr. Dunn does not want to rezon this as intense as it is. We met with James to kind of go over the plan, to let him know what the county first see, you know, this is what Mr. Dunn would like to do. Can we do this under Ag 5? Because in Mr. Dunn's eyes, it is an agricultural business, right? It is, it is dealing with the processing of vegetated debris. Thank you for that. There is, there's no landfill here, there's no long-term storage. The storage and the business plan here is that we would clear an area, and you see there already is an area cleared, so whether or not there would be immediate plans to clear any more are, that hasn't been decided yet. We're here, again, just for the rezoning right now, which we don't want to rezon, just make that clear. If there's any way around this, we'd still like to get around rezoning industrial. And, as a matter of fact, the proposal today would be, if you do decide in favor, and that there is no other way around this but to rezon this property, rez, um, industrial, to put a heavy enough condition on it that it cannot be used for any other condition, I'm sorry, any other industrial use. Because, again, that's not the plan. This isn't a backdoor effort to get a warehouse in this location. However, Jeff says this is the best way to write up that condition, so that cannot be done. That is certainly amenable to Mr. Dunn, because that's not the intent here. He just simply wants to use his property to store debris. He's got a business with different contracts, one of which is a partial clearing of I-16 right away. He needs a place to be able to store the debris and then bring a horizontal grinder in, whether that's once a week or once a month, is going to be dependent on the jobs he's got at the time. And if, you know, if he's got the demand to bring that horizontal grinder in. That's what's shown right here, possible horizontal grinder location. You notice how small that is? So, again, it's not some big industrial facility. The idea would be to store debris here and then use that grinder, mobilize it, cut it on for however long it takes to process that debris, haul that debris off. One of the, some, several of the conditions placed on this rezoning were in regard to fire protection. Well, I've talked with the fire department as recent as tonight. Mr. Dunn is on board with meeting those requirements, including the BERM, including the 1,000-gallon-per-minute fire flow system on-site. And with that, I'll take any questions. Oh, I, hold on, I'll tell you back. I'll mention that we're on Highway 119, right off of Highway 80, so two state routes. These are not dirt roads accessing this site. I know traffic was a concern that was brought up at P&amp;Z, but given the use, we don't expect heavy traffic into and out of the site.
Thank you.
Chris Roberts.
Good evening. My name's Chris Roberts. I live down on 119, about a mile and a half from this location. I'll give you a little background of myself for some of the stuff I want to talk about. I've been with the Georgia Fire Commission for 30 years, and I've been with the Bullock County Volunteer Fire Department for 30 years. And one of our big concerns down there is traffic. It's too, it's what It's two, it's within probably two hundred yards of a major intersection of eighty and one nineteen, there's got a stop sign with a lot of traffic that flows through there. And with everything that's blowing up in Blitston, that, this is the new runaround for everybody to get out of there. We don't need heavy industry in a residential area. There's people that live right across the street from this. Within a thousand foot of it, in all directions, there's, there's houses. We're concerned about water runoff. I know he says that, that is not impacting the wetlands, but right beside it on the, the north end there is a, a major runoff that drains a lot of timber land and farmland. And it runs into the Black Creek Bay River Basin. It's not but a quarter-mile runoff. Southeast Bullock County is not ready for it, don't have the infrastructure for this kind of facility at this time. The roads aren't there. Emergency response is not available down there. Don't have any full-time folks on our end. Utilities, you know, there's no water sewer to provide for when we do have, have, if it not, it's not if it catches on fire, it's when it catches on fire. City of Savannah had one last year right on highway seventeen. They had to man that facility for a month and a half, and they pumped water twenty-four hours a day until the fire was out. Took a month and a half to put it out, and it was less than a three-acre spot where they were housing this kind of material. Bullock County, or the South Bullock County is just not ready for it. We don't want it. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me this time. Can you, can you pull the helicopter, whatever you talked about, the topical? Keep coming. All right, so I live in the house less than four hundred feet across the road. The one nineteen there, it doesn't really look bad, but as Mr. Roberts spoke to the traffic, we have seen horrendous traffic coming. There are three ribble strips before the stop sign, and we've had multiple wrecks there. That's why they've got a guardrail up and a traffic camera. We have three families that live there. It's a total of sixty-seven acres. My mother-in-law's been living there since nineteen seventy-three. My wife and my sister-in-law grew up there. My sister-in-law has the nursery on the corner. You know, my wife's uncle bought this place with the thought that his survivors would take it over and build, which is what we've done. We have a community there. My niece lives in the center. My mother-in-law, sister-in-law, brother-in-law live up front. We live in the back. Traffic is horrendous. You know, you talk, with the dump trucks that have already been going in and out of there, filling that thing up, I don't know how many dump truck loads, all hours of the day, evening, dark. It's already been a disruption. We don't want it to be a further disruption. I'm a family man. I like to sit on my back porch, look at the birds and the deer and the wild turkey. I don't want to hear a bunch of grinding going on. The fire deal, we have to pay extra for fire insurance because there are no fire hydrants. The mess at the landfill in Savannah was a horrible mess. My mother-in-law wanted to be here, my sister-in-law wanted to be here, but they are, my sister-in-law said she's been here too many times and nothing's ever happened. And I said, well, I've never been. I'm going. My niece tried to get here, but she couldn't get off work in time. You know, heavy industry, I work in heavy industry. I, I've run a thirty-two-acre facility of heavy industry. And we work, even though the gentleman said it could be once a month, we work days, weekends, nights. It all goes to the same place. How much money can I put in my pocket? I'm trying to figure out how they already developed this with an Ag Five and now all of a sudden going to heavy industry. To my driveway, which is the first drive on the right, is nine hundred and thirty-three feet to the stop sign. You can't tell, but you can't see past these small bins. Are they going to be required to have an ingress or an egress? I don't know what type of equipment they're going to be driving in and out. It was already a nightmare with the dump trucks going in. Let's see. Yeah, so from property to property is about two hundred feet. And, I mean, that's my backyard, that's my house. I don't know how y'all feel, but I really don't want to have to listen to that. My, my niece and her kids, they don't want to listen to that. You can see their mobile home in the middle on the right-hand side. The house on highway eighty is where my mother-in-law is. You know, we just don't want to be disturbed. That's why we all moved out there. That's why Uncle Ronnie took his Air Force pension and purchased that land, was for us to enjoy it and hand down to our kids and our great-grandkids. And if one heavy industry moves in, there's going to be more. The traffic is horrendous. I think you spoke about the traffic patterns earlier, but I lived there. I, I beg to differ. It's, it's really, really bad because it is now a thoroughfare. I can't tell you how many times the Jake breaks happen and the skid marks that are on that curve from my driveway to the stop sign, that you can't see. When you look at outside his culvert, you cannot see the stop sign, and people just haul tail. It's scary. So I just, and you know, I understand he doesn't want it to be rezoned, so I'm kind of curious as to why we're here. But I definitely do not want it to be rezoned and have to deal with heavy industry right across the street from my family house. I know my mother-in-law doesn't want to deal with it after fifty-two years of living in peace and quiet. That's all I got. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
If you'd like to come back up and rebut anything that was said, you're welcome to do it. You've still got about five minutes on the clock.
Okay. Just quickly, the, the runoff concerns, so the, the property has already, like I said, had been initially cleared. If he were to pursue clearing over an acre, you know, we'd have to get that permitted through the state and go through the proper channels of Bullock County. We'd have to then look at how he was going to provide detention, but you do have that large wetland area there that's part of the site. You're surrounded by wetlands with this site, so I would, I would not anticipate any negatives with runoff. I understand when it rains and you're in a low part of the county, it, you, you get water buildup, you, you get flooding. I mean, that's, that's just possi-, you know, that's just the reality of it, basically, with the topography that we have in certain areas of the county. As far as traffic goes, at the P and Z meeting, when pressed on this question, Mr. Dunn stated at the max, he could see maybe ten trucks a day, and that is with a large contract. So if, i- that would be maybe one truck an hour based on, I believe, the hours that were proposed in the zoning restrictions, because there were hours imposed with days. As far as sitting on the back porch and not wanting to be disturbed or disturbing other landowners, the hour restrictions and the rezoning requirements are limited to normal business hours. So of course, different people have different workdays. I understand that you work a night shift, you're home during the day. There's a possibility that you would, you would be there the day that he is grinding. However, that's relatively small chance if, considering normal business hours. That's all.
Mr. Roberts, I know you raised your hand. If you'd like to come back up, you've got about a minute forty-nine seconds left.
I had one question, and it might fall into the Bullock County. What does Bullock County consider a pole barn?
Well, I said pole barn. It doesn't have all the sides on it. I think that they are trying to enclose it.
And it's con-, and the concrete flooring?
Right. Well, yeah, so a pole barn.
I mean, my consideration of a pole barn is, is made out of wood poles and it's a shelter, not an enclosed in steel, all steel, red, red iron steel building with concrete floors.
Yeah, so being an Ag property, over five acres, you can have a standalone building. Now, if, if you want to spend as much money as you want, then you have whatever you want, right? But that, it's just in a, it's just a accessory structure that is available to the farm, the Ag use. Now, what is presently being used for, again, that's, that may be debated, and so...
So if he gets...
I'll take a look at it, but...
So if he gets it rezoned heavy industrial, he can't use that just as an Ag building?
He doesn't use it, but I'm just saying that...
So he's trying to backdoor the system and get this building put up before he gets approved? Because you know, everybody in this room knows he's going to use that for his business if he gets it approved. I don't think none of us are that foolish.
I won't deny, I mean, you know...
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I'm just asking, because there's work steadily gets done to that building all the time. And I got one other thing, is, and I, is he going to do any burning on this site?
Are you, are you asking me that question?
Yeah, can I ask him that question?
Technically, no, but there was a question that we will ask.
Mr. Bennett, what are the chances of them doing any commercial burning on this facility, being that they've already got a commercial burner sitting on the property? That's all I got.
You still have time on the clock.
I've heard no plans to burn on the property. Would he be allowed to burn on the property? Especially considering the fact that fire department doesn't really want a fire there.
The condition that burning the vegetative debris or other ways should be...
There you go.
Where is the building at compared to the site plan? Is that the building's not on the site plan, so I'm just trying to figure out the location of it, where the entrance is and all that.
Yeah, can you go back to the site plan? It's right there, beside the horizontal grinder.
Our little building on that? I think it says shed, is that...
I should have read it right on that.
That's right.
Okay. My bad, I didn't see that. But, clarification, is that the, is that the building that is currently on site?
We didn't survey that building, so we're using a survey that was, that was done previously. It's in the same general location based on my eye, where that drive is coming in and where the picture that, that y'all were presenting was. Unless there was a shed there before that building that was there was built, again, that was, that was prior to our involvement with the project, so I can't swear to that. But based on where that is, I would say that's the same building. Yeah, I mean, it's definitely close in location.
Either you gentlemen that oppose this, do you have anything else you'd like to say at this time?
I saw you writing a clock down while he was talking. Just real quick, it was all woods prior to them coming in. They've already done the grind-up vegetation. They didn't pull any timber off of the property. They ground it up right there and, and sent it on its way wherever it went. You know, Mr. Roberts spoke about the branch. We love our branch. Had an alligator come up in my driveway that comes from the back Black Creek overflow, comes right up the branch. The branch is just on the other side of the twenty-five-foot vegetation buffer. I don't have an exact footage. It could be a hundred, could be three hundred feet. I really don't know. I did not look at that today. But anyway, it's not just about my back porch. Heavy industry, we don't need it.
I got a clock that says nine fifty-four and one that says two thirty-two.
Two thirty-two posted or posted, and I believe are nine four.
Okay, let's make this easy. Either, any of y'all got anything else you want to say? Okay. How about the board? Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Absolutely.
I used to own the property. You see on the diagram up there to where the pond is? I'm concerned about the wetlands. That's the only way the water can get out of there, except run down the side of the highway. The five acres on the corner of highway eighty and one nineteen is zoned highway commercial. If I'm not mistaken, it's zoned more than, or it's allowable to have a strip mall there with several businesses there. And I'm concerned that that is already there zoned, so it could come, and if it, we zone this and that's already highway commercial, you could have a conflict with the population, with the noise, with the trucks, with the traffic. It's just too much on that corner. Now, Mr. Chairman, when you get ready for a motion, I'm ready to make one.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion on this issue.
Motion to deny.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of denying the rezon on this piece of property? Say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand for me, too, please. All right. Motion carries to deny rezoning unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number seven was a conditional use. That would have followed that rezoning, so we'll move to item number eight. All right, this agenda item was previously heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission in July at a regular meeting. This rezon request by Blitch Place Land Company LLC, Lanco LLC, has submitted an application for rezon, would rezon fifty-seven, approximately fifty-seven acres from Ag Five to an R twenty-five zoning, which would create a single-family subdivision. Property is located on Old Riggs Mill Road, and I believe Cody Rogers will be serving as agent for the applicant. Staff recommends denial of the rezon request. However, if approval granted, staff recommends conditions. Planning and Zoning Commission recommend denial by three to zero vote. This is the general location of the property. It's west of Statesboro, located in the open space character area. Primary access would actually be on Key Akins Road. Very small portion of the property does access Old Riggs Mill. Present zoning is Ag Five, as, as stated. Area zoning for adjacent parcels remains Ag Five. There are, on the opposite side of Old Riggs Mill, R three with conditions which are town homes, basically, I guess, duplex structures and... And those really follow three major parcels down Old Riggs Mill, south end. Some R two zoning and build out, which was, I believe, built out several, a decade or two ago, so some existing R two in the area. The properties that front Old Riggs Mill, you may look at those and wonder, you know, those are smaller than five acres. Those were split out, I researched, were split out prior to zoning, so those lots are smaller than five acres that they do front Old Riggs Mill. Area properties, as you see, current use of this property is ag. Surrounding properties are ag, with exception across Old Riggs Mill Road. This is the development plan that was provided by the applicant. Again, primary access, the north, I guess, north direction would be kind of to the left, top left of the, of this map. So Key Akins Road is on the right-hand side of this map, just for clarity's sake. Again, proposing two access points onto Key Akins Road, which is a county maintained paved road. These are photos of, of the property when we placed the sign. This is on Key Akins Road. This is looking into the property as it currently is. Guess that's it. But with that, I'll ask Mr. Cody Rogers to.
Good afternoon. We are, don't need to say it again, Cody Rogers, EMC Engineering, acting as agent for this. We are asking to table this until next month. We're looking at downzoning this and may very well come back with a different proposal. So we ask that you would please let us table this until next month, unless y'all want to stay here a little bit longer.
Got a motion to table this item?
So moved.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously to table this item till next month. And I believe that concludes all of our zoning items for the evening. Is that correct?
You are correct.
Okay. Before I entertain, I'm sorry. Ms. Stainback, are you still here?
Yes, yes.
Would you like to speak about this item now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I appreciate the chance to speak. We've come again for the third time to talk about this project. My name is Susan Stainback Harrison, and I'm the managing landowner for Branch Creek Farm on Pulaski Road, representing my family. Our farmland is adjacent to the parcel we were looking at. Mrs. Jane Kason is also a landowner adjacent to the proposed project. And Jane and our farm properties are next to each other. And Jane has asked me to speak on her behalf due to some hearing difficulties.
But I can say a little something.
Yes. We are opposed to high-density housing on this site. Dense development will put a great deal of pressure on our adjacent land uses. The smart Bullock plan shows rural open space character and natural open space character in this area. And we want to strongly encourage you to help us protect these natural resources and the heritage that is special to Bullock County here. We've been investing in our land for these types of uses for a long time. And the land is used for agricultural row crops. Some of the best agricultural land in the county is in this area. Food crops and forest are very important to Mrs. Jane Kason on her land. And you've expressed, you've asked me to express your strong interest in preserving agricultural land and food crops growth in the area. So we ask you to help us respect the rich agricultural farm use here. Branch Creek Farm, my family farm for a very long time, is used for agricultural row crops, timber hunting and wildlife habitat. We've been doing long leaf pine conservation and burning here for over a hundred years. And we're actively working with the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Wildlife Division. They've asked us to work with them to protect sensitive wildlife habitats here on the land. And our farm also protects federal wetlands and floodland, floodplain lands, lowland forests and Cypress swamp land. That is important because we back up to and are in the headwaters of Cypress Lake. Our lands soak up a lot of floodwater before it goes downstream. And as you know, there are already major issues with flooding in the area recently, dams failing. And any plan for dense development in this immediate area will create more storm runoff and flooding and overwhelm the land, lands even further. This development would also be a non-conforming land use. And this high, and any level of high-density housing in this area would be just a brand-new thing in this area. The rezoning would put a lot of pressure on the conforming current land uses that are adjacent. And the, any development would create, and bringing in lots of people here would cause problems for protected wildlife and environmental detriments to the land. It would increase our insurance rates, create additional rutoff onto the land and increase flooding. I request that the commission deny the development of high-density housing here. And Mrs. Jane Kason also requests that you deny and uphold and respect the Ag Five current zoning and the 2040 zoning plan. So we've been here three times now. We'll be coming back, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you next month.
I'm afraid so.
Okay, I believe that concludes our zoning agenda for the evening. Before I entertain a motion to approve the general agenda, do we have any discussion or modification desired by the interim county manager or the board? Okay. At this time, I recognize those citizens who have signed up to address the board once your name is called. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Before I get started with that, I need to make sure we got a motion to approve the general agenda. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously to approve the general agenda. And now moving forward, if there's anybody that's signed up to speak, and there's no one that has signed up to speak, so we'll just move right through that to the consent agenda. And I'm going to read these items, then we'll discuss them at the end. Number one, approve the executive session minutes from Tuesday, July the first, 2025. Number two, approve the executive session minutes from Tuesday, July fifteenth, 2025. Number three, approve the meeting minutes from Tuesday, July fifteenth, 2025. Number four, approve the second final renewal contract with Colonial Industries Incorporated for bulk, bulk oil and fluids to be used by fleet managed, managed, excuse me, fleet maintenance on county maintained vehicles. Number five, approve the purchase of a replacement net clock master clock system for Mobile Communications America in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred seventeen dollars. Number six, ratify and improve a retention agreement with Gerard and Davis LLP. Number seven, approve the renewal of the On Airport Memorandum of Agreement for Maintenance Service with the United States Federal Aviation Administration and the Statesboro Bullock County Airport. Number eight, approve a contract renewal agreement with Clean by Lucy Two Incorporated Janitorial Cleaning Services for various Bullock County Recreation and Parks Department buildings. We can approve these items collectively, or we can move any item to new business for further discussion. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move line item number six to new business for discussion.
Okay. Any other changes we'd like to make? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number six. Okay, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. So we've already done item number one on here, so moving down to item number two under new business. County Attorney Jeff Akins, approve a resolution to tentatively adopt a millage rate for general maintenance and operations for calendar year 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. OCGA forty-eight dash five dash thirty-two point one C requires the Board of Commissioners to conduct three public hearings prior to levying the MNO millage rate if the board is tentatively adopting a millage rate in excess of the rollback rate as defined in OCGA forty-eight dash five dash thirty-two point one A nine. The presented resolution tentatively adopts an MNO millage rate of eleven point three five, which is in excess of the rollback rate, but was recommended in the approved budget for this fiscal year. After conducting the three required public hearings, the board will need to levy the MNO millage rate for this calendar year. This is just tentative, which can be set at any rate as long as it does not exceed the tentatively adopted rate of eleven point three five. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
I just got one question I've been meaning to email you, and this isn't about this one, but the fire district. Are we going to have to do the same thing with that since we're going up on their?
No, no, because that, the rollback rate, that doesn't apply to special districts, special tax districts.
Any further questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a motion. Do I hear a second? All in favor? Motion carries, or all opposed? Motion carries five to one. Items number three and four on here, we're going to, we've been requested to table those because there's still some details that need to be worked out on those. And do we need a motion to actually table those, or can we just?
Yes, sir, I think since they're on the agenda. Is that table indefinitely or defer indefinitely?
Just temporarily.
Okay, but I mean, are you deferring it to a particular meeting or?
Mr. Kemp, what do you want to do? So you want to wait till next month? Okay.
Defer until September second, okay.
So hearing that, can we get a motion to table, or excuse me, defer these two items until the second of September? Second. All in favor? Motion carries to table these two items until the second of September. Number five. Assistant Public Works Director Robert Siemens, approve a pre-disaster contract with C E R E S Inter Environmental.
Good evening, sir. Robert Siemens, Assistant Director of Public Works. All of these next four will be very similar in nature, primarily the companies that we're looking at for our storm debris removal services and our monitoring services going forward. These, these in discussion will be what we call bookshelf pre-disaster contracts. Basically, your approval tonight does not necessarily activate them for us to use without coming back to the county manager and/or the board to move forward if we do have a disaster, or it helps we don't. The review team recommends and requests approval for the Board of Commissioners to enter into pre-disaster storm debris removal services contract with Series Environmental Services Incorporated as one of the two most qualified responsive firms. I'll stop here just a second. Reason we're asking for two different firms is to have backups. We call one, they can't respond. We have another one ready to go for response. Standing contracts, pre-disaster mitigation contracts, PDMs, are an important tool of Bullock County to employ in our storm planning process. A standing contract is one that goes through the competitive solicitation and procurement services prior to a weather event happening. Standing contracts for disaster cleanup response are typically for tree removal and pruning, debris removal and debris monitoring services. As we have requested staff developed and submitted for solicitation of RSPs, RFPs, to procure standing contracts and secure qualified and experienced debris haulers and monitors in advance of future storms. The benefits of securing the services of pre-qualified contractors before a disaster include quicker deployment for debris cleanup, securing high-quality contractors, better monitoring efforts, high reimbursement rate from FEMA, developing a more streamlined cleanup response, excuse me, identifying any gaps in disaster cleanup response and administrative assistance with the FEMA Public Assistance Program and data submission. By preparing and executing these before a storm occurs, the capacity for storm preparation, response and recovery should be increased and the overall cost of the same should be reduced. Over the last couple of years, we've had, have been impacted by three major storms, Tropical Debbie, Tropical Helene, excuse me, Hurricane Helene, and the unnamed storm of eleven six twenty-four. With these storms, we work with emergency exigent contracts for Hurricane Helene along with emergency purchasing through our county finance policies. By establishing these PDMs, we are putting in place the tools and resources necessary to be prepared to plan for and react to future storms or disasters impacting Bullock County. By having these contracts in place and shelved till the next storm or disaster, we'll be ahead of the curve to bring in the needed help to respond. This advanced contract assures that the county, assures the county that in the event of major disaster, professional and qualified debris haulers are burst and monitored are on standby to deploy in the imminent, immediate aftermath of a major storm. Some of the background, on January twenty-first, twenty-five, a request for proposals, RFPs, were sent out to vendors for disaster storm debris removal services and storm debris monitoring and management services. A mandatory vendors meeting was held on twenty-seven, excuse me, January twenty-seventh, 2025 via Microsoft Teams meetings. We had eight companies represented for FY twenty twenty-five PW zero one Disaster Storm Debris Removal Services Contract and three companies represented for FY twenty twenty-five PW O two Storm Debris Monitoring and Management Service Contracts. Of the eight companies represented for disaster storm debris and services, seven of them responded with proposals on February fifth, 2025, and all seven were found responsive following an administrative review. Of the three companies represented for storm debris monitoring and management services, three responded with proposals on February fifth, 2025, and all three were found to be responsive for, following administrative review. The members of the review team have agreed to the top three companies of each RFP, and on June seventeenth, 2025, y'all approved for staff to enter into negotiations with firms. After negotiation review by the county attorney, the review team recommends and requests approval from the Board of Commissioners to enter into pre-disaster storm debris removal services contract with Series Environmental Services Incorporated as one of the two most qualified firms. This contract will not activate unless directed and approved by the Bullock County Manager and our Bullock County Board of Commissioners. Any question I can try to answer?
No questions. I just think this is a good thing for the community, for the help of the citizens. We'll be able to get them in there, get the help in here sooner than what we've done in the past. And I know we hadn't had these contracts in the past, but. And I know we hadn't had these contracts in the past, but you know, we're living and learning, and I think Helene really woke us up to that, so I think this is a good thing, and we'll get the citizens taken care of quicker, and clean up quicker, too. Maybe it won't drag out as long as it did last time because we couldn't find one the first time, so. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We're kind of so quiet tonight. All right, here are no other, further discussion. Can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second? Oh, got a second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to number six. Approve a pre-disaster contract with Thompson Consulting Services.
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Robert Siemens, Public Works Assistant Director, Thompson Consulting Services, LLC. This is for the pre-disaster storm debris monitoring and management services contract. Unless you would request to hear all of it again, is lettered the same in your packages, this is for one of the two recommended monitoring services for us to put on the shelf.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Number seven. Approve a pre-disaster contract with Debris Tech LLC.
This is the, the second of the monitoring companies that we're recommending. I'll answer any questions you have.
Motion to approve.
Do I, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to number eight. Approve a pre-disaster contract with Southern Disaster Recovery LLC.
Yes, sir. This is the number two recommended for the storm debris removal services for the contract to be shelved.
Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir. I would like to take just a second and tell you all, I do appreciate all the staff that came, came with working on this project. It has been a long time coming, and there's been quite a few of us that participated in this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number nine. Approve the purchase of three motor graders from Yancey Cat and the amount of $1,232, or excuse me, $1,232 and $11 to be purchased with T-SLOSS funds.
Good evening. Thank you. Dink Butler, Public Works Director. I've received a few questions from some of you about these motor graders. We were budgeted in this budget year for two motor graders to be estimated around a million dollars. Those two motor grader figures came in at like 475 for the sloper and 380 something for the regular grader. Brought us in a little under the million dollars. Last year, over the past couple of years, as many of you know, we've had a lot of issues with getting repairs done and keeping motor graders running. We've had a lot of downtime. And last year, we decided that we hang on to two of the motor graders. We bought two, we did not do any trade-ins. In that process, we, our idea was we would have some spares backup graders to keep moving. Also in that process, we found out that maintaining those graders after warranty became very expensive. We've had some arguments, we've got some of it covered under warranty, that it was a $40,000 one here in the last few months, that we ended up getting covered under warranty, but it technically, the machine was out. But in that process, we've also evaluated, Caterpillar offers a loaner program. If a machine goes down for more than 72 hours, they are responsible to supply us a loaner machine until we, until they get our machine repaired, and then we return that machine to them. Our responsibility in that is to cover the liability issues on it while we have it in our possession. So with that process, we decided that it was more feasible, more economic, more cost-effective for Bullock County to disperse of the machines that are not under warranty and make use of the loaner program that Caterpillar offers to, to keep our machines running as, as efficiently as possible without the additional expenses of repairs on machines that are out from under warranty and/or have them sitting, doing nothing because the other machines are running well. So our proposal is to trade four machines in. The estimated values on those machines right now is kind of up in the air. They're, they're anywhere from 50,000 to 80,000, depending on whether they're flat graders, whether they're slopers, how many hours they have on them, but all of them are out from under warranty. With that, the purchase of three new motor graders with the projected estimated values of trade-in would bring us to $1,050,000 approximately. So for an additional 50,000 that may not be budgeted, which I think we can cover in T-SLOSS, we're, we're going to over-budget basically $50,000, but we're getting out from under a lot of maintenance expenses moving forward, so. Any questions?
Mr. Davis?
Y'all went through a dilemma several years ago about John Deere versus Cat.
Do what now?
Y'all went through a dilemma several years ago about John Deere versus Cat.
We did, and we've had, matter of fact, the machine that we argued about here recently is a John Deere one, that they repaired in the field just a few months ago while it was still under warranty. And when it happened the second time, they wanted it at their shop saying they needed to do a more extensive repair, and that was our argument was if it needed a more extensive repair now, it needed a more extensive repair then, so why wasn't it done correctly then? And they decided they would cover it. In the past, I've done some studies on machines, the wear nature of machines, and if a machine's covered under warranty, a lot of times it doesn't make a lot of difference because the costs are covered. But the one thing I did document was the John Deeres wear out sooner than the Caterpillars do, and the logic behind that is Caterpillars are built out of harder steel. I documented the wear patterns on the, the ring gears, the bull gears, the blade systems, hydraulics, everything. Basically what it comes down to in my evaluation, John Deeres are designed to last somewhere between 7,000 and 9,000 hours before you start using, losing drivetrain issues. Most of the time, you've had to deal with ring gears and bull gears and maybe hydraulics before that. The Caterpillars, to my knowledge, we have never repaired a ring gear or bull gear on one in less than 10,000 hours. Most of them don't show much wear at that point. So having said that, I think we get better service out of the machines being Caterpillars. I will say that we get extremely better service out of Yancey as a company that supplies the equipment because they're local. If we call them, they respond, usually within the day. Sometimes it takes us weeks or months to get machines back from John Deere. That's nothing against John Deere Green. John Deere Yellow is different. So that's our logic. We get extremely good service out of the local service with, with Yancey. We have had some trying times with John Deere out of Savannah. Matter of fact, a few years ago, we actually moved our service for our John Deere large equipment to Augusta because we actually got better service out of John Deere in Augusta than we were getting out of John Deere in Savannah. But that included additional travel times and time to, to get the machines to and from. So for us, Caterpillar just serves us better. We went through sole source purchasing, so that's a, that's an option just like state purchasing, and we think that's the best option for us at this time to keep our machines running.
Mr. Dink, I understand that experience with these machines is your greatest teacher. Now, I understand what warranty means because the workmanship and having a machine running, I, I understand that. You're much better off with the warranty.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Can I get a motion on this item?
To approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all.
I believe this brings us back to item number six on the consent agenda, which is ratify and approve a retention agreement with Gerard and Davis LLP. And I believe this is going to be Jeff.
Yes, sir. Well, you pretty much stated it, it's, but the retention agreement is specifically to represent Bullock County in the River Bluff Properties LLC versus Bullock County Board of Commissioners litigation. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. Was it Commissioner Rushing that wanted to?
That's right. I wasn't here, and they handled this in executive session last time, so that's out on the open floor now. Would you mind telling me why you think we need an attorney other than you and George Roundtree to represent this?
Well, there were a couple of commissioners who felt like they wanted to get an attorney that had more zoning litigation experience. I'm not opposed to that, and we discussed it in the executive session, and my understanding was that everyone supported that, so that's what we did.
And this is a, this is a company, I think I've got it right here, which we know the attorney. We know the attorney is 600 something dollars an hour, and his assistant is, no, 390.
Right.
Assistant, 365, and a legal.
That's right.
Is 150, so we're somewhere around close to $1,000 an hour. And this, to bring everybody up to speed, this is the one that's down on 119 that belongs to Robbie Bell. Now, me personally, I don't care if Robbie Bell ever builds another house in Bullock County, but if he goes by the law, then he goes by the law. That piece of property was voted on by this Bullock County Commission, three to three, and the tie was broke to deny. We got Jeff Akins as an attorney hired full-time, and he's got a partner, George Roundtree, that can step in anytime. And I'm not going to sit up here and try to tell everybody that I'm going to be scared about the, about the millage rate and all that, and I'm going to save Bullock County money, and I'm going to offer to spend $1,000 an hour, something our own attorneys can defend. Now, just because I think personally, somebody's trying to dodge your black eyes, what they're trying to do. Either it's legal and right, or it's legal, it's illegal, and it's wrong. Now, that ain't too hard to defend. If it ain't right, it'd be easy to whip. If it's right, oh, that's just, we've been through this before. I've, I've never personally sat here when we had to get inside, outside, and one of the commissioners up here, and I'm not going to get to calling names unless we all want to get out here, you know? One, one said, well, we really got to win this one, because if not, we're going to be flooded with people carrying us to court. Well, I'm afraid that we're going to be flooded. I done told Jeff to his face, I'd go ahead and press you a tie, because there's a 2045 plan that's been, been voted on, and I know some of the commissioners didn't get a vote on it, but spending all the taxpayers' money buying hotshot attorneys ain't the answer. If you don't like the 2045 plan, redraw the 2045 plan, but don't lay the plan out for everybody to sell their land and buy their land, and when it gets up here to us, just because you personally don't want it, and you're scared you're going to lose in court, put your own money on the table. Don't put, don't put the taxpayers' money on the table. We got two attorneys, they can defend it. If they win, they win. If they lose, they lose. The piece of land check ever bought crossed every T dotted every I, and somebody to say here, well, I just don't want it, don't cut it. Oh, you got people in, in places, just like we heard something tonight, and there were some things voted on tonight, that I could tell you, go ahead, get ready for another one if some things hadn't have failed, because I done been told, and I told that one. And when a man walks up here and he lays a recording in front of the chairman up there and says, I want the minutes off of everything that's fixing to be said tonight, and that's what happened. Well, Chris, go Haggins, and it been that, and I'm telling you, we got a 2045 plan, we got things to do. There's people got land, some people said, I talked to the face, well, you know, I know my land's worth a lot of money, but I don't intend on selling it so it never benefit me. Well, I just happen to know some people real close to me that when you have a stroke or something and you need 24-hour care, you, you'll be glad to sell it, and you're going to want to get every dime you can for it. So as long as it's legal, it's legal. If it ain't legal, it ain't legal. But don't come up here and tell everybody how you're going to save the county all this big bunch of money, and then you're going, we're going to sit in the executive session where everybody don't get to hear all this, they're going to spend $1,000 an hour. Now, everybody wanted it, I'd note, there it is, I'd note, but don't worry, I'll keep you abreast of what happened. So, however, whatever the rest of them want to do about it, it's fine with me. Now, my vote is to deny the $1,000 an hour to fight some and let Jeff and them fight it. We had the Schuman Road Project, that, just like one of the other commissioners said, well, they upheld us on the Schuman Road Project. That's right, and I understand why that happened, too, and I'll be glad to explain that. So, if they held us up in that, and they held us, hold it up there, if we voted right. If we voted wrong, they won't hold it up there. So, that's where I'm at, that's what I got to say, whomever wants to flow past that, come on.
I don't think a dollar amount was ever really quoted, I just know that at end of executive session, it was that we were not willing to exceed in paying, using taxpayers' dollars more than what we was going to have to pay you and George Roundtree to send. That was, that was kind of what it is, why I paid three when I already got two, I got to pay anyways, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I didn't know, yeah, I didn't know what their rates were at the time.
And maybe, maybe I'm wrong, maybe the other commissioners have other, but that was, that was kind of my assumption, that's what we was going on, we was going to try to get hard numbers on what it's actually going to take, you know, because we.
Well, let me say this, they've already done some work on this. They prepared an answer and filed it, so there's been some work done by this firm on this based on y'all's representation to me and.
Well, I, I was not here.
Well, I know you weren't here.
But I, I know what the chairman, I know what the chairman, I mean, I know, I know what Toby told me and, and some of the other commissioners told me, and I was not here. And so, matter of fact, when it come out over the state website, that they had filed the papers to answer the litigation, I wondered then why they had been hired and they hadn't been voted on as far as I knew to be hired. I wasn't here. I'm just telling you what I told, what I was told, and so if I was told wrong, then I guess you have to take.
Well, that's why this says ratify and approve, so. We've done that sometimes with other agreements and contracts when there's an urgent timeframe, because you can't just sit around and not file an answer. You have to file an answer by a certain time.
Then I guess the next question, why was it to the very end, then before we ever took any action? You said we can't sit around.
It wasn't to the very end. The answer was just filed last Friday. This was the first agenda that I was able to get it on, so.
So you saying you can't defend it?
Saying what?
You saying you can't defend it, then?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay.
No.
So you can defend it?
Well, I mean, George and I could do it, yeah.
Okay, well, okay.
I'm, I'm doing what I understood the board wanting me to do.
And, and I'm just asking you, because I'm trying to understand, too. I'm trying to understand myself.
Okay, well, I think I've explained it.
So, I'll just add this in there, and I wasn't here either, but I can tell you that I did have a conversation with Jeff about this before I, I left town, and I told him then, and I'll tell everybody here the same thing. If I go in and have surgery on my heart, I want a cardiothoracic surgeon to do it. If I go to have surgery on my brain, I want a brain surgeon to do it. The same way that we hire people out to do hydraulic engineering, the same way we hire people to do road engineering, the same way we hire outside legal counsel to obtain right-of-way for roads, this is a specialty case, and I think that if we're going to go to court to do it, to defend what we've done, we need to hire specialty people. We use the same justification to hire outside counsel to obtain right-of-way for roads, and that Jeff is busy with the day-to-day stuff here. George Roundtree is a general practitioner, and a general practitioner, they're good of a lot of stuff, but they're a master of none, and I would much rather have somebody that is the expert at what they're doing to defend me in this situation, to defend us than I would anybody else. I agree. If it's legal, it's legal, but these things go to court because you have a gray area in the law, and it must be decided exactly.
And my question on that is, is we've been through this several times, and we've never hired any outside, and so would you please explain to me why this is a special one? Why is, why is this rezoning issue specialer than? one? Why is this rezoning issue specialer than the rest of them are?
I don't know. I wasn't here for those.
I... I mean, I was here for everything but the last meeting.
Right. And I'm not talking about the meetings. I'm talking about those other legal cases. I wasn't here for them. And I could tell you that if I was here for them, I would've recommended the same thing, that we seek outside counsel that is specialized in those situations.
For specialty cases?
Yes.
I'm just... I ain't following why this is a specialty case when it's just an ordinary rezoning case like all the ones before.
Because rezoning is its own issue under the law.
I understand that. Every case is the same. This is not a specialty case unless you make it special.
But the... Under the category of law, rezoning and zoning issues are a unique part of the law.
So, from now forward, if anybody brings suit against us, we gonna hire outside counsel?
Well, it sounds to me like we're gonna end up voting on it, but my recommendation is gonna be to hire outside counsel that specializes in those things.
And my recommendation is, if it's specialty, yes, but if it's a regular case, then I'm gonna vote not to.
And that's why we vote on these issues.
I was one of the ones that did want to hire it outside court, outside help, and I talked to Jeff about it, and I told him, there was nothing against him, there was nothing against George Roundtree, but I felt like that we needed somebody that specialized it, just like Chairman Bennett just said. I mean, you know, just like all the consultants we hired. I mean, all the engineering. I mean, Mr. Ron Nelson over there, we got three or four, five or six different projects going on. I mean, he could sit there and do it, but I don't think he'd get anything else done during the day if he had to try to design all the bridge. I mean, what we got going on right now. So, I was one of the ones that suggested it, and I went along with it, 'cause I think that's what we need to be doing on this, on this case right now.
Well, just where everybody's making the comments is for clarity, and Jeff, I'm sure, would make, 'cause I asked specifically, how did he feel about it, and because I thought that represented good in the past. But I, for my part, I sort of left it up to discretion. If they felt like it was best to get outside counsel, then that's the way we would move forward. So, that's what I left with, and so they proceeded to move forward that way. But I just wanted to make sure it was clear, 'cause I believe in this being as candid and honest as possible, and that's what I said in that meeting. I think Jeff would agree with that.
And I'll say these rates are pretty reasonable. I know, but compare... They're up in the Atlanta area. There's a lot of attorneys up there that charge a lot more than what they do, so the rates are not unreasonable.
I think if we're gonna go to court, we ought to put our best foot forward. We need to do our best to represent what we have done, what we believe in.
And I don't deny that at all. I just think I got a lot more confidence in Jeff and George than y'all do, I guess. I'm not... One question there, ability. I'm just stating, why do we have two, and we got to get a third one and an assistant and all of that. And I ain't never known Jeff to lose a case yet, so I mean, I just didn't really know where the specialty part comes. Still, what I'm having trouble, the specialty in this is what I'm having problems wrapping my mind around, when it's just a standard case to me. Because I ain't worried about a black eye. Now, some people, the way they voted, might be, but I'm not.
Well, it's not a matter of a black eye. Again, Mr. Rushing, I think that it comes down to, you go to get a divorce, you hire somebody that does family law or a divorce attorney. If you go to do real estate, you hire somebody that does real estate. I look at this as being no different. I want somebody that's the expert at zoning.
What in our conversation that they would assist y'all, that they wouldn't be solely responsible for the case?
They're the lead, they're the lead counsel in it, yeah.
But y'all still are assisting them.
More like we're assisting them, yeah. And they have had a lot of experience in zoning litigation.
Can I just make one, another clarification? George is not an employee, so he also bills us for all of his time. So, if he is not the lead on this case, we are not going to be paying George's firm as much as we would. So, that's going to even out some of that cost.
Christie, can you tell us what George bills us at?
Not off the top of my head. I do not know his rates.
Yeah, I think it's 250, maybe. 225, I'd have to look. It's less than this, but, you know, attorneys in small towns like Statesboro charge less, and George gives the county a break. He charges other clients more than he charges the county, so...
Mr. Simmons, you look like you wanna say something.
Well, I will say this. Whatever happens, it's gonna set a precedent. We either gonna be filled up with lawsuits, or we ain't, one or the other. I do have confidence in Jeff and Mr. Roundtree. Seems like we spending taxpayers' money, but we did kinda leave it in Jeff's hands if he thought that it was good to bring him in, bring in another spokesman, so...
And they can get paid for what they've done. Now, they sent a letter. They can get paid for that. Ain't no problem.
Any other questions or comments on this issue? Here and none, I'm gonna call for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we deny this return.
Do I hear a second? Second. All in favor of denying the ratification of this retention agreement, say, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion is denied, four to two.
Make a motion to approve.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of approving the ratification, raise your right hand. Got one person that hadn't voted.
You gotta give me a minute. I'm thinking.
Okay.
I'll give you just a second on that.
Mr. Davis?
This, this is the problem, what I'm really running into here, is, maybe I missed it somewhere. I don't know. I've been looking back through it. We left, you talking about hiring a doctor, hiring a man drill roads, hiring a man to... He tells you what he's gonna charge. Up until now, I don't know what they're gonna charge, till we just figured it out just then, or when you... Earlier. And now we gonna jump on board with this. I guess you're right, we can't wait, 'cause it's legal action, but...
You say we can't wait. Now, the letter's been filed, so what we got to do tonight? Can we, can we, can we table this?
No, I don't think so. Y'all need to make a decision one way or the other. And if you don't approve it, then they'll have to withdraw from the case, but we're gonna have to pay them for what they've done.
That's right, but the letter will still be filed. We'll still have a open case right on that you'll have to defend.
Yeah.
That's right. I mean, yeah, we still got attorneys, and we still gonna fight it. We just gonna fight it without wasting a lot of money.
It's up to y'all, but I mean...
So, your motion to approve? Motion carries four to two.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I was for hiring Mr. Another attorney. Is that the way you read that? Oh.
Yes. We approved the ratification.
Okay.
Okay. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Let's start with the staff first. Mr. Nelson?
Ron Nelson, Engineering Office. Just wanna give a quick update about Neville's Denmark Road, the bridge culvert replacement. Had the storm almost a year ago, so Thursday would be a year ago, August the 7th. So, we have made pretty good progress all during the course of the summer as far as construction. Real quick on the work that has been completed. June, we saw demolition of the existing culvert, and then in July, we saw the new culvert completed. We've seen backfill put in place. Roadway slopes have been reestablished. Subgrade work basically fell into place two weeks ago, and then the end of last week, we saw the graded aggregate base being put in place. They've done some fine grading this week, and just kinda waiting on weather to kinda continue to play a factor in what to finish this project. They do have some asphalt scheduled for possibly Friday, but they're, again, weather-dependent. We'll see what happens between now and next week, but we've got a few safety items we've still gotta complete that are kinda out there as far as being a little bit of a variable on their schedule. Signing and marking with some, the striping, obviously, and then the guardrail, most important, having those safety features completed. And we're still on schedule for opening traffic mid-September, so that's good news. If they can bring it back sooner, that would be great, but right now, we're still on track for mid-September opening the traffic. And then the final options, I mean, the final things to complete will just be grassing, stabilization, general cleanup, and things of that nature, but we're looking forward to having that project prioritized and working on the remaining features to get it completed. Any questions about that project?
Mr. Nelson, while you're there, I just wanna remind everybody that the traffic pattern there at Old Highway 46 and Neville's Denmark Road, Neville's Daisy, I'm getting them mixed up.
Neville's Denmark, that's correct.
Neville's Denmark has changed. There is a four-way stop at that...
Always stop condition, correct. Yes, sir.
And if you would, would you just elaborate some of the process that we went through and why that four-way stop is there?
Sure. So, DOT was looking at that particular location, did a traffic study back, really, last year, and it all followed through and got an end result recommendation based upon the increased traffic on Neville's Denmark. That put the existing throughway traffic on State Route 46 to become secondary, so we have a stop condition on both sides of Neville's Denmark, so now we move forward to try to improve safety at that location. Always stop was recommended by DOT, and the county affirmed it, so...
And I know that there's been some concern about traffic backing up at that four-way stop with school, once Neville's Denmark opens back up there. With traffic backing up to Highway 46, can you talk some about what we're gonna do as potential mitigation measures for that?
Well, we're gonna continue to monitor that location, the county will, and then also we'll be in close contact with our partners there with DOT, and we'll continue just to see if things continue to move forward. I think we've got a safe condition out there. DOT has put everything in place. We've got three legs operating right now. Been up there and looked at it several times. School did restart last Friday, August 1st. Haven't seen any particular situations, haven't heard any complaints, so we're gonna continue to monitor and see how we can continue moving forward there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other staff comments?
How y'all doing? Ben Tapley, Fire Chief. I just wanna invite everyone out to the Cleto Fire Station Sunday, about 3 o'clock. We're gonna have some cookies there and some refreshments, and we invite you to come out and see the new renovations. We did it on the weekend, so hopefully we could get more of the community out to see how we're improving public safety in Bullock County. So, come out, 10-9-3-2, Cleto Road, Statesboro, Georgia. So, come out and have some fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Can I ask you some questions? I know we had a house fire up there in Oak Ridge.
Oakfield.
Oakfield. And I know y'all had to shuttle water. That's on a community system up there, right?
Yes, sir.
Was there... Did we know that we didn't get... Did we know that there was no water up there?
Yes, sir. We've done that for, since subdivision regulations have been in place.
Okay. Whenever y'all pull up into a subdivision right now, do y'all know what fire hydrants are rated for and all that stuff currently, or how do y'all go about doing that right now?
Yes, sir. We, for ISO purposes, we have to go and do testing of fire hydrants. The way the subdivision ordinance reads now is that the water system owners are supposed to submit that yearly. There, we don't have any teeth in our ordinance, because it doesn't actually have a date when it's supposed to be submitted by. It just says submitted to the fire chief. There is no, I guess, again, no teeth in it, what happens if they don't submit the paperwork yearly. We did not receive the first set of paperwork last year, so this year, my team are actually going around and gonna go through every subdivision, 'cause, you know, we just inherited a lot of subdivisions in the, it used to be the Five Mile District, and they're going to check everyone. Test, we have to test 20% a year. Over five years, we're supposed to do, you know, 100%, and we're supposed to flush them out once a year, per ISO recommendations. So, we've known that. As you could, you know, anybody that follows Facebook, you know, they reminded us about the fire that we had there 11 years ago, and we had a house burn down. Statesboro was primary. We were automatic aid, and they had to page us back out so we could provide a tanker shuttle in that neighborhood, because none of these community water systems will supply fighting a fire off the hydrants. At the time, it was 250 GPMs for four minutes. That was the subdivision ordinance. 250 GPMs stands for minutes. Last year, we had it up to needed fire flow with a minimum of 500 GPMs for two hours. ISO's recommendations are for 250 GPMs times the two hours. And, you know, needed fire flow is weird. I think I've talked about it before. You know, it's all based on how big your house is, right? If I have a, you know, 1,500 square-foot house, and these developers know what size houses they're gonna put into a subdivision, because there's setbacks, right, off the sides. They know how many feet of road furnish they gotta have, so there's a certain size house that can go on that lot. So, if you had a 1,500 square-foot house, it's 500 GPMs. Well, that's what our minimum is right now. If you go and build a 3,000 square-foot house in this sub, in these subdivisions, then you gotta have 1,000 GPMs. Well, our ordinance only has 500 GPMs. Is it better than it was? Heck, yeah. Okay? Is it where it needs to be? In my opinion, no, it's not. But I don't know if that answered... I answered your question.
Out of all the community systems that we have in the county, how many comply with that yearly testing services?
Zero.
Zero? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other staff comments? Here and none. Any commissioner comments? Man, everybody's tired. Ready to go home tonight? Well, I just wanna take a minute to remind everybody about the fire station open house on Sunday. We have had some good meetings in the last week or so with both the city and the other municipalities in regards to floss, and we'll provide some more details with that at our next meeting on the 19th of August, so... That being said, if there's nothing else, I believe we're gonna go into executive session now. There'll be no action taken after this executive session meeting. I must now call for a motion to adjourn into executive session in accordance with the provisions of OCGA 50-14-3B2 and OCGA 50-14-3B1B and other applicable laws pursuant to the advice of County Attorney Jeff Akins for the purpose of discussing personnel and real estate matters. Second. All in favor? Unanimous to say.